We will reestablish quorum. Thank you, everyone. Maya?
Trustee Hack?
Present.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Rocha?
Here.
Vice President Lathan?
Here.
President Lewis?
Present. Okay, so we just re-entered from closed session and there's nothing to report out. So, thank you for that. We will, excuse me, now go to Section 3C, our flag salute. Trustee Hernandez, would you mind leading us? Actually, can we have the student representatives lead us? One of the student representatives lead us in the flag salute.
Flag's behind you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so the superintendent is not with us tonight, but I believe we still have a superintendent's report.
So, she, Superintendent Anello, says that she regrets that she can't be here this evening. She's not feeling well, but she said that her comments she will share with you in the Friday board letter.
All right, moving right along to Section 5A, High School Student Representative Report. Thank you.
Before they begin, I would just like to say how thrilled I am that we have student representatives back attending our board meetings, and we are thrilled that you're here. These are students from Deer Valley High School, so they will be the first group to share with us. And I know they have a number of things that they would like to tell us what's going on at their school. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Would it be appropriate for the two of you to introduce? I don't know if that happened prior.
We're about to get there.
Okay, okay, I'm jumping the gun. I'm jumping the gun.
Good evening, Board of Education and members of this community. My name is Therese Buncontejo.
My name is Jamali Bothi, and we are here representing Deer Valley High School.
Okay, the first thing we have for you guys is student activities information, starting with our first day of school called Wolverine Welcome Day, and it was a success. At Wolverine Welcome Day, instead of having our students attend class for 15 minutes each period, they were instructed to leave their belongings at home and enjoy a day of community building. Students met their new principal, Mrs. McLennan, and they learned how to get involved in school activities and sports, and they also enjoyed a field day with games and inflatable obstacle courses. Freshmen were placed into cohorts of 15 students and met their Link Crew leaders. We also had a free freshman pool party at our school pool hosted by Link Crew a couple weeks later.
Deer Valley is looking forward to our homecoming week, the week of October 9th. Our theme this year is game boards, and we invite you all to visit our campus the week of October 11th, a Wednesday, to view the decorations around campus created by our leadership students. Unfortunately, we are not able to host any home football games this year at our campus, but our homecoming game will still happen at Antioch High School on October 13th. We all hope to see you at this game to take on the Heritage Patriots. A big thank you to the Antioch Panthers for their hospitality this football season.
Our fall sports are off to a great start. We have students participating in girls volleyball, flag football, girls golf, girls tennis, cheerleading, water polo, and football. Our boys' football team has turned things around under Coach Mills. We ended our 18-game losing streak dating back to 2021 and currently have a game, a two-game winning streak. Our DV marching band, drum line, and color guard are gearing up for fall season as well. Their first competition is September 30th at Pittman High. Last season, the drum line placed the highest in DV history.
For student achievement information, Deer Valley honored our Renaissance students last week for their accomplishment in last year's spring semester of 2023. 410 students earned a 3.0 or higher GPA and received cookies from Costco. 227 students earned a 3.5 or higher GPA and received donuts from Al's Donuts, and we are extremely proud of the 86 students who earned a 4.0 or higher GPA. These students received boba tea from T4. Our students are working hard this semester, and we can't wait to honor our next batch of Renaissance students in January.
Well done. Next, we have updates from academies, link learning, and special programs. First of all, business tech has hit the ground running. The marketing class and the den have made approximately $1,400 in sales since August through their print shop. Students create custom designs for posters and apparel for various schools and local businesses. The virtual enterprise class is finalizing its business idea for the new year and will compete in its first competition, an elevator pitch comp at the end of September.
ACE Academy is hosting a star party on Friday, September 15th, at 8:30 PM at Deer Valley High School. Mr. Atkins will have telescopes out to view stars and maybe even some planets. This event is open to the public. DV also had over 40 students attend Mesa training at CSU East Bay to participate in competitions this year. And Hannah Johnson, an ACE Academy student, earned an internship with a company called Unistellar to do a research on a telescope they will provide her.
Our law and AIM Academy partnered together to host a cross-curricular project for our biomed pathway students. This project involved a forensic investigation, a crime scene acted out by our AIM students, and a trial conducted by our law academy in their new courtroom. And that's all we have for you guys tonight. Thank you.
Very good.
So, do we have questions or comments from the board? Trustee Hack?
I just said, "Thank you," so it's good to have you people back.
Absolutely. Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, thank you so much for being here. Really appreciate that report.
Trustee Rocha?
I think it's wonderful to finally have them back.
Trustee Dr. Lathan?
Thank you.
And I will also extend that thank you, and also, as a college football player who went on an 0-9 skid, I know what that's like to go through an entire season without a win. But the next year, we actually won our conference, so I won't say what team we beat, but, you know. We won. So, Deer Valley, go ahead. So, next up is Section 6, Public Comments. We have a few public comments. The first is 6A, the first is from Amanda Freitas.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good evening. I wanted to start out on a positive note tonight, I know we don't hear a lot of those from me, but Fremont, we've been doing our letter Steve briefs for our trainings, and we were able to-
Meet with Deb Malin, and I'm just hopefully optimistic in the direction that we're going with our literacy right now. It was a great meeting of collaborating, us telling her what we're doing, her telling us her vision, and it was just really great. However, as a parent, there are two big things that really concern me right now, and one has to do with funding. We have two DI schools in this district, Fremont and Mirror, and I don't understand why there's such a disparity in what the district centrally funds for Mirror and what the district centrally funds for Fremont. I did send an email to District Admin. Some of it was addressed, but one of the big pieces for me is our bilingual office assistant. I'm not sure why Fremont has to use their site funds to fund the half-day position for the bilingual office aide, but Mirror gets theirs fully funded. That's $18,000 we're paying with our site funds, and that could be used for other resources for our students. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, it was several meetings ago, Trustee Dr. Lathan brought up a sped review, and I would really like to see that come back. As a parent and a teacher, our sped department is very frustrating. Once again, my son is not getting all of his services. He's supposed to get counseling 30 minutes weekly. We're six weeks into the school year, he has not received any counseling services. There is some issues, I guess, with his IEP not being done correctly, and I just, it's not his fault that it wasn't done correctly, and he's not getting things that he needs. He actually went home Monday early from school with a panic attack. His aide wasn't at school to help him out, and he's- and he's not getting, you know, ways to help him work through those things. And then, just frustrating IEP meetings. We have people from the sped department who are coming to IEP meetings representing the sped department, but they have no idea who our students are. So, when the teachers are in there advocating for the student, the sped department's shooting them down, you know, telling them, "Oh, you need to differentiate more. You need to do this," even though they're bringing in that evidence of what the student is doing in the classroom. And unfortunately, a lot of our parents want good things for their kids, but they don't necessarily know what they need to say in the meetings to get what they need. And so, when they're hearing the sped department say, you know, "No, you don't, you don't want a one-on-one aide. That's too restrictive for your child." They're actually thinking that they have the best interest in mind, but unfortunately, a lot of things come down to dollars and spacing classrooms. So, I think we have a lot of students that are in places that are not appropriate for them. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Next speaker is, I believe, Teke Flo. Please correct me if I mispronounce your name. Apologies. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Teke Flo.
Okay.
I'm a community member. I'm a mom, and I'm here with Reimagine Antioch as well. So, a couple of things. In order to guarantee that our district is effectively recruiting qualified, diverse, and inclusive educators, I respectfully request that this board provide data-driven information for public review. This data should include comprehensive details on the recruitment process, hiring practices, and the composition of our educator workforce. By making this information available to the public, we can enhance transparency, accountability, and promote a deeper understanding of the district's efforts to create a diverse and inclusive educational environment for all students. Second, I wanted to address the 504 plans. My daughter is a student at Deer Valley, and I was told that all the 504 plans were erased for some reason. I don't know, deleted. I don't know how that happened. So, we are a few weeks into the school board, I mean, the school's, um, school's year. And we haven't gotten a phone call that we normally get to address those issues on the 504 plan. And then, also, the teachers. So, when she started ninth grade year was when her anxiety and convulsion disorders persisted. But we didn't know what they were at the time, and a lot of the teachers were dismissive and making it seem like she was acting out, and she wasn't. And then, so when we did get a counselor and try to put some of that information on the 504 plan, and they wouldn't let her... Basically, they was like, "Well, she can have earphones," but they wouldn't let her do that. She could take a test outside the class, but the math department so-called said she couldn't take the class in the office, which I didn't understand. But they would rather see her convulsed on the floor. So, that's the issue. The 504 plan and the, um, the culture of our student... I mean, yeah, the students and the teachers and the, well, the principal was a little okay. But for the most part, the teachers were dismissive, and my daughter had a very, very, very hard time her ninth and her 10th grade year. She's in 11th now. And now that we have an actual diagnosis, we haven't gotten a phone call or a meeting. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you, guys, for your time and your service.
And thank you. Next up is Christina Pedraza, I believe. Okay. Again, forgive me. Yeah.
So, I have a very powerful voice. I don't have to use the mic. I apologize.
Well, we asked that you use the mic for people at home.
So, I am here as a parent and a member of the PTA at MNO Grant. We have a safety concern. I would love to find out the reason why. Our school, our very first access to our school is through the very front office. We had that locked with a doorbell that rang in the office and also in the teacher's break room, and it alert if anyone is at our front door. We were asked to have that door unlocked. I don't, as a parent, not just a PTA member, I find that to be very concerning because of the safety issues. It is the last line of defense, if anything unfortunately happens, to our students and our staff. Someone walks through that door, the very next door to enter our campus is right there. It is just like this. I don't understand why we cannot have that door locked and secured properly. Most schools that I traveled around to make sure that they have this level of defense, you have to go through a gate, be buzzed in, to get onto campus to get into the office. We don't have that luxury. So, why can't we have our doors locked? That's the biggest thing. Second thing with the, and it sounds so minute compared to everyone's passion. I get the 504. I have children with special needs. Out of my nine children, I have three of them with special needs, so I understand the advocating for that. But the next one is the water fountains at our school. They are probably as old as the building itself. Children are not able to refill their water bottles that are suggested that they bring to school because of our COVID protocols and things like that. Those water fountains are hot. They're pretty disgusting because of, you cannot have them maintenance the way they should. They should be ripped out and repaired. Why don't we have adequate and more up-to-date water fountains for our children? The last thing we have been working on for the last year and a half is because of the size of our school, 90% of our children are outside, sitting on concrete, having lunch. It is horrendous, the sun sitting there. They're in this fishbowl, and it's uncomfortable by all means. We've come to board meetings. We have talked to the superintendent. We have talked to facilities. And everyone has given us reasons why and not very many solutions on how we can make this happen. Construction, maintenance, cost. Our kids are out there all day, sitting in the sun. And what ways can we make that happen? We've suggested doing tarps, getting them anchored. They can't do that because there's no way to safely anchor. They're talking about putting in poles. They can't do that. So, if we can look into those issues for our school, that would be great.
Thank you. Next up is Gavin Payton.
Hello. My name's Gavin Payton. I'm the youth president of the East County NAACP Council. I'm coming to you guys as one of the members on my executive committee because we're asking you to please come to our banquet. Our proceeds are going to youth scholarships. It's an appreciation dinner for Mayor Chanel Scales and Supervisor Federal Glover. We're asking if you guys will come and buy a table because what we need in our community right now is people to help with investing in our youth. Our youth need help. So, what we're doing is we're trying to give the proceeds to a scholarship to youth. So, that's our target. We're asking you to come and do that. If you guys could come as a collective and come and support us, that would be amazing because what we are stronger in, we're stronger in numbers. How we set up, maybe we cannot fix the problems right now currently, but the people that are going to come up from behind us and behind us and behind us, if we invest in that future, that will set the futures for generations on down. And maybe we could, they could have a solution to our problems. We may not have the answers. I might not have the answers. You may not have the answers. But it starts now. If we invest now, we have a better chance in the long run than not doing anything at all because a closed mouth does not get fed. So, my question is, is it guys going to be a closed mouth? Or are we all going to speak up and stand together as one? Thank you.
So, Gavin, really quick. You can give him his, give him his applause. So, thank you for coming to speak. So, a couple of questions. You mentioned it's $5.60, I believe, for a table.
Yes.
And if individuals wanted to go, I mean, just for public consumption, for people who might want to go, how much is a single ticket for that event?
$70.
$70. And how would they go about getting those tickets?
They can come to me. I have a book of tickets right here. It's on November 4th. Also, our advisor, Mrs. Green, she also has a book of tickets.
Is there a website or a link that people who-
Yes. I do have a flyer. I could send it out to you guys if you want. There's a QR code, and it leads to Eventbrite, and you could buy the tickets online.
Is it okay if you get that flyer to Maya? And we can make sure that we share it out and get that information to folks who may be interested?
Yes, thank you.
Next up is, I believe it's Mary. Yep.
A little bit taller. So, I'm a parent of a student at Deer Valley, and I'm also here on behalf of Reimagine Antioch. I'm going to start with our hiring practice, which was that we are urging the board to establish transparency process in board members and administration, which includes conducting comprehensive exit interviews with educators who have chosen to leave our district. These exit interviews should be structured in a way that enables educators to candidly and without fear or prejudice, provide detailed feedback about the reasons for their departing. This proactive approach to understanding and addressing the factors contributing to educator turnover will be invaluable in improving our district's ability to attract and retain talented and diverse teaching professionals, third-party or not, in a position of leadership. And then, on behalf of me as a parent of a Deer Valley student, I have a son who recently was taken off his IEP, which is fine. We're proud of him. And I got a call from the new vice principal at Deer Valley, which I love, to tell me that they had misplaced his 504. They originally said IEP, so they didn't know that he had changed to a 504. And I said, "Well, what happened?" And he said, "Well, we did some turnover, and the 504s are gone." So, I had to dig up what I had, which I didn't have a copy of the 504 because it was signed digitally, and my digital signature login had expired. But I had the previous IEP and all of his testing. So, when my son, who assumed that he had his 504, went to advocate for himself, he was denied by his teacher, his accommodations that he's allowed to have. And I said, "No, Sonny." That's my son. Sorry about that. I probably shouldn't name-drop him. I said, "Go back and talk to him again." Went back and talked to him again, denied a second time. Then, they got an email from me, of course, and we're getting to have our meeting immediately. But that shouldn't have happened to begin with. We are supposed to be instilling, you know, confidence in our youth and teaching them how to take care of themselves. And that should have been in place for him because he's an honorable student with accommodations. He is an F student without them. And it's important to me that I bring that up. So, thank you.
And thank you for all who presented. That concludes Item 6A, our public comments. Moving on to 6B, we have three comments. The first is from Laura Boett.
Well, it doesn't seem like it's a long- Good evening. My name is Laura Boett, and I'm a TK teacher at Fremont Elementary. I am here tonight with a few of my TK colleagues to present to you the importance of changing the teacher-to-student ratios in our district as TK evolves into universal pre-K. Transitional kindergarten was established in 2012 to bridge the gap to serve the students who have previously been eligible for kindergarten and who turned five between September 2nd and December 2nd, but were left out due to the change in the new cutoff date of September 1st. Fast forward 19 years to 2021, when Governor Newsom signed into law to expand TK to all four-year-olds by 2025-26 school year, which changes TK to universal PK. With the introduction of younger children into formal education comes the challenges of their maturity, safety, and also meeting the individual needs that will benefit all TK students. I am advocating for the next contract to change the ratios of the one teacher and one aide from 24 students to 24. Overall, smaller class sizes in TK classrooms can provide a more nurturing and effective environment, learning environment, allowing students to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Reducing class sizes, particularly in early education like TK, can significantly benefit students' learning experiences and outcomes. I would like to share some of the advantages of having 20 or less students in TK. Increased teacher-student interaction. Smaller class sizes make it easier for teachers to maintain classroom discipline and create a positive and orderly learning environment. Enhanced learning opportunities. Students in smaller classes have more opportunities to ask questions, participate actively, and engage in hand-on learning experiences. Better social development. With fewer peers, children may feel less intimidated and more confident, especially as they're getting younger, leading to improved social skills and greater participation in group activities. Greater individualized support. With fewer students, teachers can provide more one-on-one attention, fostering stronger teacher-student relationships. Students who need additional help or have special needs can receive more targeted support and accommodation in smaller classes. Enhanced social and emotional development. Smaller TK classrooms help children develop important social and emotional skills such as cooperation, empathy, conflict resolution, and self-regulation. These skills contribute to healthier interpersonal relationships throughout their lives. Higher graduation rates. Research suggests that children who attend a TK are more likely to graduate from high school. Early intervention in a smaller TK classroom can set students on a positive academic path that continues throughout their educational journey. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, 6B is Kim Atkinson.
Hello. My name is Kim Atkinson, and I am a purchasing technician in the district. And I'm just asking for help. We've been asking HR and certificated and classified, and we've been begging for help in our departments. We are experiencing bullying by a staff member, and it has become to the point where our absences are through the roof in the department, mental health, physical health. All of us are suffering at the hands of this that is not being handled. And it's not being handled because of a personal relationship that this director has with our superintendent. And it's not right. It's not fair. I can't stand by and watch it anymore. I can't stand by and see my friends and my coworkers live through this every day. Every day, we come to work, and we don't know what the day is going to hold. There has been countless, countless inappropriate behavior that I could give you example after example after example, but nobody wants to hear us. And we've begged since January. It's been begging for help, and nobody will help us. I am committing career, my career's done with the district by standing here and saying this and speaking up. But I cannot watch this happen anymore. I can't stand by and see my friends go home in tears and be scared to come to work. It's not right. Please, please help us. Thank you.
And so, Kim, I do want to apologize if, you know, to address the workplace environment. You know, that's an uncomfortable situation, and we will definitely look into it. Next up, 6B is Saxon Brown. Oh, I didn't know this was left. First name was Saxon.
Good evening. I'm Saxon Brown. I teach at Lone Tree Elementary TK. I'm also advocating for smaller class sizes. I've been teaching for 24 years with 20-plus of them in kindergarten, which I just love. It's my passion. I absolutely love my job. I love my class. I love my students. I was given the opportunity to teach TK, and last year was my first year there. Absolutely fell in love with it, but had 17 students. This year, we have 24, and they're younger. And it's been very, very challenging. The purpose of TK transitional kindergarten is to start kids at an early age and to prepare them for kindergarten and beyond, to have them be the leaders in the kindergarten classroom, have them, you know, have all the strong foundational skills. We strengthen their fine motor skills with fun materials like Play-Doh and cutting and salt writing and sand. We're learning how to socialize, share, wait in lines, follow- We're learning how to socialize, share, wait in lines, follow directions, all of this while we're having fun. We are all at 24 students, which is our max right now. We're struggling, we're exhausted, we're saddened, we're frustrated. We need our class size to be down to 20 with our wonderful aide, who I have my wonderful aide here with me tonight, so that we would have 10 to 1. And the purpose of TK has really dwindled for me this year, especially since it feels like we've been in school for three months and it's only been about five weeks. There's 24 four-year-olds, so just try to wrap your brain around 24 four-year-olds. So they're very needy and they're younger and younger, and next year it will be even younger. I'm not able to meet the needs of all the students with this class size. I've had to pull back on so much of the academics and really work on the behavior and the social skills. This, the needs are so high and the students are younger and younger, as I stated. This is not preschool, this is not daycare, this is school, this is TK. We need smaller class sizes to implement the true meaning and the purpose of TK. So, thank you.
Okay, so thank you for all who spoke. Next up is item 7, district reports. We have one facilities report, but before we get to that, we have a few comments for this item. The first is from Michael Sage Horn.
Good evening. Last, last night I looked at the presentation that Ken and his team put together and kind of scrolling through the details, one of the things I looked at from my own campus at Deer Valley was an issue that I came to the board two weeks ago, which was the 14 acres of PE space that was unplayable and unusable because of dryness and weeds and stickers and heck, there might even be a few snakes out there on that hardpan. But, you know, the answer is, is that it's 14 acres of instructional space that for at least as long as I've been in the district has been ignored from a maintenance and management perspective. And I have a note here from my boss, from Veronica, that they're on the way to fixing it, but it's not listed in the list of projects. There's a thing about baseball fields and this stadium project, but there's nothing really addressing the instructional space, which serves as when we take the stadium down, whenever that can happen, we'll have football players and soccer players and PE folks out there on that hardpan. And, you know, I'm a rugby coach and I can tell you injuries on that surface are, can be really, really nasty. And in soccer, both men and women's soccer, those kinds of injuries on that pitch are going to send our kids to the ER. So I would just compel the superintendent, the business agent, to really, really fast-track and get that on the target list of repairs to be made, you know? I'm not a PE teacher, but I can tell you as a coach that that field is, it's miserable and it needs to be fixed. Thank you very much.
Next up is Dominique King.
Hello, Board. So my comment is regarding the bond measure. I would like to inquire about the strategy for engaging with both the community and our local unions. And if you have one, why is it not posted? And if you will have one, how soon will it be posted, seeing as you're trying to put this, fast-track this bond measure? Could you also please share any of the scheduled dates for upcoming meetings and your anticipated timeline for making revisions to what may need to be in addition to this measure? One of the prime examples, we have one of our very involved parents, we have another very involved teacher who is listing what some of these issues are, yet when looking at the PowerPoint, it looks very disorganized and thrown together and lacking some of that valuable information that can come from those folks. And just speaking on behalf of the AUSD community, there is growing concern with the lack of community involvement in determining how funds are allocated in this district. We cannot get a bond measure passed if our community does not trust us, and then even worse, if our school community has no faith that that money will be allocated properly. I request, I respectfully request that the bond be postponed and the decision to be, place this bond measure on the ballot for the time being. The current approach, as presented by the PowerPoint, as I said, seems disorganized and does not sufficiently address the broader and more pressing terms of our campus, like shading, our water fountains, our classrooms, the lack of sunrooms, not even having an old-school PowerPoint in them. These are all things that we can be looking at and talking with our community members as well as our teachers and students. And so lastly, the hope is to develop a more coherent and inclusive plan that genuinely addresses all of our concerns, whether it's trade, whether it's families, students, teachers, educators, and administrators. So please, my ask is to postpone this bond measure. Thank you.
Next is Beatrice Lee.
Hi, I am Beatrice Lee. I am coming here as a mother of a student in Deer Valley. I'm also an education, educator in special education, so I'm, that's a sideline. I'm just confused, how can you lose IEP when it's, everything is automated, it's online? So that, that is weird and this should be investigated. Okay. But the reason I'm coming to today is I have three of my children who attended Deer Valley. My last one is a senior right now and she's playing volleyball with Coach Steve over there. And last year I brought up to the, some of the board member via email and to the superintendent and to the then principal, that it was outrageous that there was no air conditioning in the gymnasium. They were old and when we had a tournament in that facility, it was 105 degree outside. I guarantee you, it was over 110 inside. And I was on the bleacher, higher up, I was drenched and I wasn't moving, so I can't imagine the athletes inside. This year I again sent another letter of complaint regarding this because I was told, of course, there's no money, blah, blah, blah. The same story, which I understand, but I don't care because this is the health of our athlete. And not only my daughter, my daughter is, is done with the season, so I'm here on the behalf of the future generation, she will not benefit of the AC, but I still think it's important. And this, this year was the same, the same issue. Upon returning the first two weeks, three students had a heat stroke outside. So it's just telling you, if they have a heat stroke outside, what is it going to be inside? Yes, you bring some portable fan, it's blowing, it's blowing hot air, it's not doing anything. And yes, they have some cooler, but when you have 100-plus degree outside, it's not going to do anything. So I think that's a ticking time bomb and what's going to happen is somebody's going to have a serious accident. There will be a lawsuit and it will be much more costly than paying for that. So I understand there's a lot of issue, this and that, but it's kind of shameful when I go to all the other Oakley and Freedom, in Brentwood, everybody has air conditioning except poor Antioch. So I think both Deer Valley and Antioch High School deserve air conditioning. Thank you.
Next, Steve Evans.
So I'm Steve Evans, I'm the coach you was talking about. I thank you, Beatrice, for coming. I've been a longtime resident for 35 years. I've had five children who graduated from Antioch High. I was called a trader when I went over to Deer Valley to coach, but I was, but I've been coached for about 20 years of volleyball at Antioch and Deer Valley. And in regards to what Beatrice has talked about, the heat in that gym, it's not just for players, but it's for the students that are in PE. That, I go in there before, sometimes schools have to sort of start getting things ready to set up for the girls, and a lot of times they're having to sit down and the lights are out just because it's so bad. I find it sort of ironic because I was taking a course that we have, coaches have to take and staff about heat illness. And so I was taking a course today about heat illness, but then we had no air conditioning in the gym. And I was told that it was going to be in the summertime and we'd go in there for tryouts and, and there's no air conditioning and the girls were very disappointed. And again, it's a safety issue, it's lawsuits, but more importantly, it's the safety of our children and it's something that is unacceptable. She talked about Antioch High, my children in Antioch High, same thing, no air conditioning in there. And then like she said, you go to Freedom, Heritage, you go to Tracy West, whatever school it is, they all have air conditioning except for Antioch Unified School, high schools. So I just really urge you to do something about it. In regards to the heat in there, we had a tournament in there back in, I think it was the 19th of August, and I got, got in there about 5:30 in the morning, went into the small gym, it was like a furnace in there. So I tried to open doors up, tried to turn fans on, but it's just not healthy. And again, if you're asking us to train for health illnesses and, and safety precautions and then we don't do anything about, you know, what we can do about air conditioning, it just seems sort of hypocritical. So I'm just pleading you to, again, I don't have any students, some of my kids have all graduated, but I love these girls and young men and, and they deserve a lot more, so thank you.
Okay, that concludes our speaker cards for item 7. Next, we have our facilities report.
So I'm going to have Ken Turnage, our Director of Maintenance Operation, go through a PowerPoint that shows some of the projects that's been completed. There's some projects on there that are in the works. And there's also a few slides that will show some of the master facility plan that we had done a few years ago in conjunction with meetings with Ken, going through what the sites need as far as all the different maintenance and upgrades. And then the last slide will talk about a bond measure and if we plan to go on a bond measure, just sort of a timeline on when things have to be done and decisions have to be made.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ken Turnage, very nice to see all of you. Thank you very much for having me here today. We're going to go through, school by school, some of the things we've done over the last year, things that we're looking at doing at the different campuses, and then I'll be able to take questions when we get down to the end. Bear with me, I'm not a computer person. Like I said, my name's Ken Turnage. Our team consists of Bill Whitney, Josh Eisenberger, Audie Palmer, and Jana Griffin. We're the ones in the office. And then we have our maintenance grounds and custodial crews that are the ones that actually do the work. Right here is a slide that shows the age of our schools. And one thing that would really like for you to take a look at is, you see items in the green there, those are the updated ones that have been done recently. As you're looking back at some of our schools here, we have a group of schools that are 70 to 80 years old. We have schools that are 50 years old. Our youngest school that we have on this list is 16 years old. At these points here, everything is starting to really take its wear and tear and need maintenance. Fremont Elementary, that's been a school that we've had a lot of focus on this year. One of the things we have done for the students is we've restriped all the playgrounds, we've done all the safety striping at the school, we've repainted the entire exterior of the school. There's been significant energy efficiency upgrades from Prop 39 in the most recent years. And most recently, we have completely redone the kitchen inside Fremont Elementary. Due to the age of the school, the sewer pipes and the drainage pipes going from the grease traps have completely rotted in the ground. We had to cut the concrete open, dig out the pipes, redo the pipes inside the kitchen, run them back outside, pour the concrete, and then we put in a 50-year floor. So we'll be able to continue having a nice, updated kitchen for the future. During that also, we replaced all of the lighting with LED inside the kitchen and updated the paint. Diablo Vista, it says restriped playground and safety lines. Well, full transparency, it starts tomorrow. Our painter had been out for a while. So we'll be starting the restriping of that tomorrow. Belshaw Elementary. Over the last year, we've replaced a multitude of HVAC systems there. We tinted the windows on the sun side in the afternoon to minimize the solar heat gained into our classrooms. We have single-pane windows, so, because the age of the school, so we took tinting on as one of our avenues to help slow down the heat gain in the room so our air conditioners can work better and give a better ambient temperature for the students. Standardized the breezeway lighting, all the lighting over there, well, it was kind of mixed up and a little hodgepodge. We got all the lighting put together with LED so it's illuminated correctly as you walk through. Removed a lot of overgrowth. We were having problems with unwanted guests in the back of the campus. We were able to get the overgrowth cleaned up, removed a lot of trees. Painted the exterior of the school, restriped the playground and the safety lines for the entire campus. John Muir Elementary. This past summer, they had a very large project go on with having the roof replaced. We put on a 50-year roof, so this school should be protected from rain intrusion for a good amount of time. Lone Tree Elementary, this is one that we have targeted for additional works that'll be coming as well. Currently, we have removed landscaping and overgrowth. That way, we don't have unwanted guests on our campuses. Kimball Elementary, that's another school where the roof system was completely replaced with a 50-year metal roof. Another school where, once again, we tinted the windows to help with solar heat gain and also get the lighting better so they could use their computer systems without having sun wash out. Painted the exterior and restriped the playground, did a bathroom renovation to accommodate for the new special needs classrooms that are going in over there. Future project for Kimball School is we're getting the playground redone. It's in disrepair, it needs help. We have significant cracking in the concrete where support posts were at the school, which was part of the original shade structure that protected the windows, that were removed from there. Those actually existed when I was a child at that school. Jack London Elementary. Currently, we have a large project going on over there. We're replacing the aging soffits. I'm sure you're aware that we had a section where a soffit fell from...
What is a soffit?
It is the ceiling portion of a breezeway. So if you're walking down a hallway that has a roof system over it, the ceiling portion is what's called a soffit. The chiller is being repaired on the campus right now. We're replacing the looping system and adding shut-off valves so we could independently shut off each building instead of having to shut down the entire campus if there's an issue. The chiller is part of the HVAC system that runs the cooling for the entire campus. The breezeway lighting is all being replaced with LED lighting where we are opening up the soffit, so we have access to the electrical so we can replace the light fixtures at the time. At that school, we had a significant water leak also. We had to remove a section of concrete, dig down, replace one of the main water lines to one of the buildings, I believe it was the F Building. Marsh Elementary, another school with landscape overgrowth that we've been able to remove. We have replaced the majority of the HVAC units over there with nine more that are going to be replaced during the October break. We repaired the storm drain system in the blacktop. They would usually refer to it as Lake Marsh every winter. We were able to go in with a new type of jetting system and blow all the debris out of the drain system, so now it drains like it's supposed to. Restriped the playground and all the safety lines on the campus. Restriped the playground and all the safety lines on the campus. Future projects, once again, we'll be using the tenting method to help our air conditioning systems. Since we're putting in the new air conditioning, it's going to be best to help for the longevity of the system so they don't have to work as hard. Remove additional trees. Even though they were absolutely beautiful, the large redwood trees are causing significant damage to the campus. They're clogging our gutters, our drain system, causing water to back up. And this is the main reason why we've had roof damage and water intrusion on this campus. Repair the drains to prevent future flooding around the classrooms. We have to get the trees out first. Mission Elementary, replaced lighting, HVAC in two wings, replaced playground, playground. Future projects, replaced the playground. The playground is outdated. As you could see, it has the old dome style, which actually, when I was a child, broke my wrist. So we're going to get that out of there as soon as possible. Remove damaged cement benches. They're in disrepair. They need to come out. They're not very good to be around. Replace portables and install LED lights throughout the site. Sutter Elementary, this year, the main courtyard that was all broken up and had the old tree boxes in it, we had all of that removed, poured new cement in there. That way, they have a nice open area for their lunches. Restriped, the restriping of the playground has not happened yet. It will be happening over October break. We've painted the exterior of the school as well. Turner Elementary, we painted the exterior of the school. Upon doing the paint at the exterior of the school, we found extensive dry rot in two different areas, which we had to get on very, very fast. So we can get this put together so the school can be brought and ready to open on time. Restriped the playground and renovated one of the portables. Turner Elementary is also a school where we tried a new type of flooring in one of the classrooms. We went with a vinyl plank flooring there to see how it holds up for our younger children for spills and everything to make it easier to clean. We're trying to help our custodial staff and make it easier on teachers and our students if there are accidents in the classroom. Future items for Turner, continue to modernize the bathrooms, repair exterior ramps to the portables. We've repaired several, but there's many more that have rotting issues and rusting on the metal ramps. Remove landscape overgrowth and remove damaged cement benches. Antioch Middle School, this past summer, the chiller system for the school was replaced. It was a very large project. That was a DSA project that took a long time to do. It really was a big pull to get this system replaced. And there were delays due to shipping. This project took a significant amount of time longer because our chillers, when we do replace them, they have to be manufactured to fit the specs to go in the areas that we automatically have. It's not like we can go to Home Depot and buy these. So usually, when we replace a chiller, from the time that it breaks, it's 30 to 34 weeks before we even have a chance at getting it to show up. The electrical in the 300 building shorted out a few weeks ago. We already had a transformer redesigned, installed, and have the electrical backup in the 300 building. Future projects at Antioch Middle School, replace the bike racks, update fencing to improve student safety. Next slide. Modernize and repair locker rooms. Upgrade equipment and storage so students have comfortable and safe area to change and store personal items. Repair the water lines to the 300 wing. Repair brick veneers and planner boxes missing and loose bricks cause, these cause safety concerns. These loose bricks are an issue. And we need to get these veneers and everything put in because how many times, even when you were a child, you're walking by, you're dragging your hand along the wall. Last thing you need is one of these veneer bricks popping off and landing on your feet. Upgrade portable classrooms as well. Black Diamond Middle School, we renovated the classrooms for the Thomas Gaines Virtual Academy. All the rooms in the back, we had to build out all the walls, put in the tech, put in the flooring. That way, we had these ready for the virtual academy. Repaired extensive dry rot at the main entrance. I don't know how many of you are aware, but when we had our Williams inspection done in August, that we found significant dry rot in the entry atrium of Black Diamond Middle School. We had to close the entry atrium, set up temporary walkways for students to come through the theater, completely removed the entry atrium. I walked the project today. It will be completed, cleaned up, and open for use on Friday. After Friday. They got a power wash Friday afternoon. So Monday, it will be open. Oh wait, go back. There's more. We repainted all the exterior wood at Black Diamond Middle School. Because we had this dry rot issue, we wanted to protect our investment. So we painted all exposed wood, filled the cracks where we could, because keeping fresh paint on wood is the one thing that prevents dry rot. Dallas Ranch Middle School, significant upgrades to the security cameras, thanks to Chris and his team over there. And plus, a lot of removed landscaping overgrowth. We had trees that were leaning over that as soon as you saw the wind blowing, you could actually see the roots lifting through the ground. Park Middle School, repaired the main courtyard drainage. We had to cut the box open. For some reason, for a courtyard that's about 3,000 square feet, it had one eight-inch drain in the center. Didn't make much sense. So we had to cut that open, install a new basin box, tie in the piping, and that way, that can drain properly in the future. Future projects at Park, replace portables. Install new fencings to secure the access road and repaint the entire exterior of the school. Park is one that you'll see later in there where there's, we have full district-wide items. Park is really involved in the district-wide items that need to be done, including full HVAC replacements. Antioch High School, one of the more interesting things after I started here a year ago, one of the overhead beams just snapped in a breezeway. So we had to shore it, fabricate metal to create a new support post, get a pitch put on the roof because it was due to the rains, too much weight, that caused a six-by-14 beam to snap in half. In the gym, we have modernized the gym lighting, replaced all the lighting with LED, increased upgraded security cameras, once again, thanks to Chris and his team. And so for people that are interested in the air conditioning, I'm happy we got to this point. We are in design for air conditioning to be put in, in both Antioch High School and Deer Valley High School. These designs are in the accepted mode. I actually have a 7:30 a.m. conference call with the engineering company to finalize the items for both of the gyms so we could get this submitted to DSA so we can get air conditioning put in. So I was glad that was one of them that came up earlier. DSA, that is our governing body from the State of California for Design Structural Architectural. And they're the ones that basically control everything. That's our building department for anything that is attached as a permanent structure to a school facility that services children. At Deer Valley, so that's been a very interesting one. The biggest problem for Deer Valley for getting this air conditioning put into place was the fact of the way that the roof was framed. Up until two years ago, they did not make an air conditioning unit that could be used for both heat and air that would be supported by the way the roof structure was framed. Due to technology changes, we can use what's called a heat pump package unit on the roof as long as we redesign the curbing system and not have to reframe the entire gym. This is what's made this affordable, so this can go forward. As you know, we have the installation of the turf and repair, the modernization that's in progress. This does include the upper field. We are putting in a hammer throw, discus throw on the upper field. And once that is done, we will then be able to renovate that upper field properly so we can use it. Repaired broken water line under the asphalt. That doesn't sound like much, I know. But this broken water line was up on the upper section of the back parking lot. It was literally 25 feet down. We had to come in with excavators, wall shoring material made out of three-quarter inch plate steel. So the walls of the dirt didn't crush the employees working down there to get this fixed. We've updated the swimming pool equipment and we have renovated the baseball and softball fields moderately. There's still a lot more to come with those. Dozier Libby Medical High School, a lot of you may be very well aware that we've had a road shift up there. So we completely restriped the parking lot according to the original plans of the school. And there will be additional meetings with the City of Antioch and Kaiser for easement and road accesses. Bidwell Continuation, that one there, we haven't had too much to do up there as of yet. We will be getting there. We had a minor asbestos abatement and a couple rooms of carpet that were installed in there as of yet. Future bond projects. I don't even know where to begin. As you know, our school campuses, they're aged. We have a lot of items that need to get done. And the only way we can get them done is we have to have full commitment. And yes, we have to have a proper plan. There's a lot of work everywhere we go. And as soon as you fix something and make something new, it makes something else stand out that it needs to be fixed. As you touch more things and fix more items, more items show themselves that they are in disrepair or have just aged out. That is the biggest item that we have on our campuses as items have aged out. Currently, we are using the CalShape grant and we are doing a lot of HVAC tune-ups with the CalShape grant. That is what it's for. And we are efforting to go through with the CalShape grant on the plumbing side so we could replace water fountains, sinks, and faucets. This is one of the things we're currently working on. And there will be a meeting with the CalShape grant people in two weeks. Deferred maintenance, future projects, ongoing projects. Deferred maintenance, it's what it sounds like. Items that are kind of pushed a little bit. We'll get to them when we can, when we have a little bit more time. And everybody here has a house with their honeydew list. It's just sooner or later, it comes due and you got to get it done. And we're at that point. Future projects, the list of projects that we have on here are just a small amount. I could stand here and talk for three hours on projects that need to be done, put them in a prioritized way. This right here was predominantly for the maintenance side. We have so many items with tech that Chris is working on over there as he's looking at his computer right now. We have items with our grounds department, our custodial department. All of these do need to be addressed as well. But for tonight's presentation, we were trying to keep it down to these items right here. Ongoing projects, we've already touched on those as we went through. I gave Chris too much credit. The clicker's not working. Okay. These are district-wide items. HVAC repair and replace. Repair, we need more replace. Safety, security, lighting, security cameras, fencing. Yes, we need better fencing. Our entries to our schools, we do need to protect them better. One of the speakers was describing earlier as the system to get in is called a Sally Port system. We have that at Antioch Middle School. They're very, very functional, not very attractive, but sometimes you've got to give up some looks to make sure everybody's safe. Technology, infrastructure, cybersecurity. I don't understand any of that stuff. So I can't tell you anything about it. 21st Century Learning Spaces, science labs, technology upgrades, flexible workstations, pathway programs. These are dominant in making sure that we get our children the proper abilities that they deserve. And this is something we need to be able to work forward to. But in order to get there, we have to satisfy the foundation that our schools are sitting on. Classroom modernization and upgrades goes with the other portion there. Physical education, athletic fields, gymnasiums, grass field renovations. Our grounds director, he has a method that we're going to be imploring for doing our grounds renovations. We ordered large field mowers last November, October. They were supposed to be here in March. We got them three weeks ago. Getting our deliveries is very hard. We've been trying to maintain our fields with quarter-turn mowers and small field mowers. Now that we have the correct equipment, we will be getting better net gains. Theater upgrades. I was over at BD Auditorium just today, going over lighting and going over our technology portion there. Roofing repairs and replace, 75% of our schools need brand-new roofs, minimum. And Kimball Elementary, I believe that was a $1.8 million project. And John Muir was just over $2 million, I believe. That's how much it costs to replace a roof. Play structures and asphalt. We have literally acres of cracked asphalt that needs to be replaced. We are restriping right now so the kids have bright, vibrant play areas. But getting a slurry coat or a crack repair and slurry coat is very important for having our kids with a good place to play, as well as play structures. Technology is great. I wouldn't want to play on an Atari right now when there's a PS5 out. So we need to get these play structures back up to par. For me, I believe that is the end of my portion of the presentation. Do you have any questions for me? And then I'll hand it over to Liz Robbins.
Yes. First of all, thank you for the presentation. We'll start with Trustee Hack.
There's so much to know about, no.
Tricia Hernandez?
Yeah, I have some questions. How are we determining priorities on all of these projects?
Priority, danger. If we have anything that's really a heightened danger item, we had the dry rot over at Black Diamond where the entry of the school was compromised. Dry rot issues at Turner. When we have failures, that's another way that things are put right in the front of the line. If we have an HVAC unit fail, that jumps to the front. Otherwise, we have to close a classroom. Some of these HVAC units, such as one at Dozier Libby Room Eight, 32 weeks to get the replacement of the HVAC unit. It's been delayed four times. It's either we have to wait for these or we have to do structural framing changes to put a new unit in to fit. It's not feasible.
And what are the timeline for these projects? Like in terms of, what are your goals for 2023, 2024? I like this massive list that we just presented.
If I don't have a 25-foot-deep pipe break at Deer Valley again, a lot. I don't have a way to really give you a good answer for that. We are very reactionary right now in our maintenance- We are very reactionary right now in our maintenance department. We are getting bombarded daily with a significant failure. We are planning the best we can to get some of our, what we call low-hanging fruit or optimal items continually. When we have a painter free, they're on the striping machine. If we have an HVAC tech free, he's on doing a maintenance or a service for making sure units are cleaned properly, filters are done, and belts are tightened. If we have the plumber free for a day, we're going to General Plumbing and we're getting faucets for him to replace. That's only happened twice so far with the plumber in over a year, though.
What processes do we have in place to get community input or staff input? How can we make some of these projects and our prioritizations of these projects a little bit more driven by the community and by staff?
Well, it's more driven by the property right now. Once we get to the point where we get a lot of these failure items replaced, we'll have the luxury of being able to go forward with more outside input. But right now, I'll show up tomorrow, I get to the office about a quarter to six in the morning. By 6:30, my day will have changed.
Do we have the infrastructure in place to get community input once that's going? Or do we have a process that's, you know, a, a process that's going to be in place for when we get to that point?
We have already developed items like that. We have developed a maintenance at a USD email address, which is on our website, so someone can definitely contact us directly from the outside. Our maintenance department does have a direct phone number as well. But these are still in the infant stages. To tell you any more than that would not be accurate.
What do you need from the board in order to get from a place of being reactionary to a place where you can be proactive and address community needs more directly?
Well, I guess I need you to go ahead and say, yeah, let's get this bond and help push it and get this thing signed up so we could have some money to get these items done. And then it's going to take three to five years.
And what processes do we have then to make sure that the bond itself is also community-driven?
You're gonna have to ask Liz that question.
Are, are you working with Liz to address those kinds of things as well? Because I imagine you have some of the most expertise on the issues and things that we have going on, so you can help kind of bridge that gap in conversation with the community to make sure we're both aware of the technical piece of repairs and maintenance, as well as taking into account the community input on what those needs are?
Yes, so this is part of the process of him presenting things that he's doing and some challenges that he has. We're also talking to the administrators to help, they understand what their, their needs are and to, to try and have them get input at their school site council meetings, at their staff meetings. That, that is a process that's going to take place in the very near future.
And then I guess the, the last question I have is how can we better communicate to the community the amount of reactionary work that we're doing so that they have an understanding of why things aren't being addressed and so that there's a transparent piece there so that they can understand why are these things not happening and what is holding us up so that it doesn't feel like their needs are being ignored?
Well, one of the things that we have just implemented at the request of the superintendent is I am putting out a monthly, monthly report to the superintendent on what we have completed on our incident IQ system. That's our ticketing system for repairs that are submitted by the admins and also submitted by custodial staff. So we are putting that information out, and we just started with the first report last month.
Can we turn that report into something that is public-facing so that they can also see that information and keep up to date on those things that are happening?
You did send it to all administrators.
I did send it to all administrators, that is correct.
How can the public get access to that information?
Right now, they can go through their site administrators at their particular school site, but we can look at maybe posting it on the website or putting it in the Friday Board Letter.
Yeah.
And that's public.
Awesome, yeah, I'd love to get rid of barriers there, having to have like a middleman for that information. And, yeah, that's all the questions I have for now, but definitely plenty more coming along.
Fair enough.
Thank you, Trustee Hernandez. Trustee Dr. Galata?
Thank you for the report. I'm glad to see that areas are being addressed that are really important. And it's also disheartening because just being a home, you know, a homeowner, we know if you wait too long to do something, this is what happens, right?
100%.
So I, I look for the day where we're no longer reactive but proactive. Something that you shared about the landscape, and I know some staff have come up and talked about landscape concerns, overgrown grass and weeds and all of that. Those are like daily things that can happen, maintenance areas. How do you all deal with those things? So you talked about removal of overgrown grass. Like, to me, that's like a very low-level thing that people should do all the time, and maybe you meant something different, so I just want to clarify.
Just a touch more than that, yeah. So on the backside of Bell Shop, that entire school for the length that goes up Worrell, down the backside where the fields were, where we had our Little League tryouts, all the way down the fence, coming back up to the street, maybe three-quarters of a mile of fence line, that over time, people had planted trees. This was all overgrown area. We went through, we removed over 40 trees, cut the neighbors' trees that were hanging into our property, removed the shrubbery and the bushes that were all in the back. This was actually done by an outside company because it was too big of a task for our maintenance crew to get done. We brought in a third-party company to do this, which we've been fortunate to use on some of these bigger type of items.
So is there a way, and maybe you already have it calendared, where like those type smaller things, I'm saying small because it's, it's grass that means...
It's not grass. It, it, and yes, once it's removed, to keep up on the maintenance is something that is scheduled. We do have a scheduled run for our grounds employees to go mow the grasses, do the blowouts. While we're catching up on the edging, one of the things that wasn't on the PowerPoint at the front of Fremont Elementary, last year, we did, we completely redid the front of the school with drought-tolerant plants to have a flood. It's just the way it worked out. But we are looking into those avenues as well. That way, we can get net gain and employee time to be able to address those types of items and be able to keep moving forward because some of these areas have sat. We went through a bad run before I was working here when there was employee layoffs. And some things got overgrown, and it's like dealing with your home, trying to play catch-up takes some time.
Yeah, that's why I was asking you about a schedule. Is there a, do you have a schedule?
Yes, ma'am.
And then lastly, I think it's lastly, we received a report, I believe it was from Ms. Ibarra about, I think it was a Williams report some time ago, that all of our facilities were fine. I remember that conversation because some of us had questions. And when I look at that, I'm like, it's not fine.
No.
And when, when parents and community and when I walk schools, I'm like, it's not fine. And so what it sounds like is a threshold that whoever has, the county or the state, is really low, and we need to expect more.
I, I think, and I don't want to speak for Ms. Ibarra. I think what she reported out is after our Williams inspection, we completed all of our tags, all of the work, in the timeframe required, and we were in compliance for the first time in a long time. That was last year. Happy to report, as of last Friday, we're in compliance again after our Williams tickets were done for us in August. It's a very trying time. They come out, do our Williams inspections at the beginning of August, and we're to have these done by the third week of school being started. So instead of having the time to address what's going on in the schools now that we have a high influx of people in there, we're doing these other items that, yes, need to be done, but it makes it very hard to respond to, my air conditioner just went out, can you get somebody over here? My sink is now plugged, can you get somebody over here right now? Because we do have these that we have to get completed, so we're in compliance.
Thank you.
Trustee Rocha?
It's troubling because I know, I don't know how many employees you could have doing all of this work, because you don't have enough, I'm sure. And do you have to go out and pick up, do you put out some of these jobs to outside community?
We, we do use third-party contractors on some of these items. Our maintenance items, that's what our maintenance people are supposed to be doing. So we use our maintenance people on our maintenance items. When we have replacement construction items, those types of things, that's when we're using a third-party company to come in. And then, once these are replaced, then we have the proper staff in place to maintain them, like they're supposed to.
I think in looking at what was described and how you're giving us the information, education has become a very important piece because we lost the last one by 40, 54 votes, and it was the same issues. Only the worst now, because like you said, if we didn't take care of it then, it's now twice as bad than it was there. One wasn't brought up was this, this building. I understand you had an air conditioning problem. It's not on the list.
Don't jinx it right now, it's working. Yeah, no, yes, we've had significant problems here at this building with our chiller. Today, I had a meeting with one of our third-party vendors here today. We are going forward with the replacement of this chiller as well. I'll be happy to report out, it's 30 to 34 weeks before it comes. The good thing is, we're getting out of the hot time. The heater portion will still work, so at least we're not going to go from burning up to freezing.
Good. Well, I guess, I'm thinking to myself, in education, we really need to get to the parent and to the community of the issues that we have and how important it is. Because once the money's put out, the money can't be used but for those things that are mentioned. And that's how, and that's why you have a bond committee, that's why you review everything and how the money's being used. So the idea that we could use it any other way is almost impossible. So I, I'm just hoping that we can get this all very clear. I love what you have here and how you've exposed everything. So I think that's what we need to do at every one of our school sites, so that our parents can understand what's going to go in their particular school, what else do they want that we might not, we might be able to add to the list, and then we might not, because we have to think of the whole district. So I'm glad that we started this process. I'm hooking, looking forward for more information. And of course, we have to address all of our family gatherings, especially the families that are in ESL, bilingual families that not always understand the English version. So thank you very much for your presentation.
And this is a very shrunk-down version of the entire list we have developed. They said I have to be able to show up to work tomorrow morning, so I had, this had to end at some point.
Yeah.
So I did have a couple questions. So in your presentation, you mentioned a couple times unwanted guests when you were talking about the overgrowth. Can you help us understand what those unwanted?
Unwanted guests, people on our campuses that aren't supposed to be there.
Okay.
Squatters, unhoused residents, homeless, there's a lot of adjectives out there.
Okay, all right. And then secondarily, at Marshall Elementary, you mentioned that the trees will be removed, the redwood trees, to help with the root.
Unfortunately, yes.
Now, so what is the plan for addressing? Because again, in addition to, you know, beautifying the campus and all those things, trees also offer ground cover and shade, shading and things like that. So in those warmer summer months, if those trees are removed, what's the plan to address that, that, that adjustment in temperature, I guess?
There's going to be selective reintroduce, reintroduction of trees for areas that actually fit where we can use them best. Right now, the only thing we're removing are trees that are creating damage, not shade or help.
Got it. And so just for clarity's sake, a chiller is?
It's an air conditioning unit. If you want, we could take a field trip right outside. But no, it's a big air conditioning unit. It's really, it's about as long as your podium there, maybe a foot and a half wider and 18 inches taller. And it is what a water looping system goes through that cools the air, so when the air is pushed out by a compressor, it comes out at about 52 degrees.
And then for the air conditioner installs, do we have an ETA on those? I know...
Which air conditioners?
For Deer Valley and Antioch High.
It's got to go to DSA. I cannot control them. I wish I could.
Okay.
Our, our goal is to have it done by the time school starts next school year. So if we can, if we get it through DSA and can get it done before summer, we'll do that. But my goal is probably, we'll probably be doing most of the work towards the end of the school year.
And lastly, I think it's more of a statement, I think, the, and I don't want to speak for the entire board, but I think one of the conversations that I'm hearing in total is that we want to make sure that when we're thinking about a bond, we want to make sure that we have community input, not just for the bond, but just in most of the decisions we have, because all of us have collective expertise. But again, that expertise is limited by what our experiences are. The community and the people at large, their experiences may differ, and the experiences with the kids and their kids in school may differ. So I think as much as possible, if we could have opportunities for maybe listening sessions, town halls, and those types of things, to get that community input. Because again, the way we explain things may land on different ears, the, the things we're focused on and the things we prioritize, kind of what Trustee Hernandez was talking about, may sound differently or may be interpreted differently if the community is involved. So...
We are required to have bond committee meetings, and those are, will be open to the public.
Well, so open, open to the public and designed for the public are different?
Fair enough. I understand that.
And thank you for saying that. And I think part of it is not to put you on a hot seat, but that's typically...
I'm used to it.
That's something typically the superintendent would direct, like we would direct the superintendent to host those things, to set them up, to work with their staff, so not to put you on the spot. You, you just happen to be there, standing here. But I, I do agree, and I understand the fact that we'll have a bond committee, like there are all these laws behind what needs to happen when you're going out for a bond. But I think part of it, too, is about campaigning. We haven't had a bond, I believe, since 2012. Is that correct? And when I talked to the person who was the superintendent at the time who passed it, which it hasn't been passed since then, she told me that it was a huge campaign, that people got together, had conversations, talked about it, what they wanted. Some things may not have been able to happen because there's a, a certain dollar amount in like you see, like we, we have to first do the patchwork stuff before we can even get all the other beautiful stuff done, right? But I think when people understand that and know that, they're more likely to vote for it. But if we're silent and we don't have community forums, we don't ask people for their input and actually educate them on what we can and can't do with the bond, they might not pass it again. So I'm hoping that, that we will. And I'm just looking at you all, but I know that's the conversation we need to have with our superintendent.
Well, I'm hoping behind me is a bunch of people willing to put in time on our phone bank.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your time.
So speaking of the bond, just a couple more slides. So this next slide is basically just Ken and I sat down and went through in each school site. We do have another document that kind of shows the dollars amounts. That's how I got the 103 million of the cost to do what needs to be done. So this is, this, these are things that have to be done because the schools are old and need this, need these improvements. So you can see a few of the, a few of the areas are blank, like for paint, and that's because he's done, he's done that, he's painted that. The shade structure right here is secondary. These are the secondary schools, again, that need, the older ones need pretty much everything. Again, I have a, a different document that shows the cost, and that's how I came up with the 81 million. Oh, did I not? Sorry, sorry. Okay. So for the 2024 potential bond program, you know, we have nine of our schools that are 50 years old, like Ken said, and five of the nine are 70 years old. We really need a geo-bond to finance the improvements that needed for all of our facilities. It will help us maintain safe and sustainable schools and fund any modernization projects. And modernization projects are projects that we really do more redesign to a, to a current building as opposed to just putting a new roof on it. You can see that the needs are significant, and here is the timeline. So right now, we have two options. One is if we go for the March 2024 ballot, this would be the timeline that we would need to adhere to to get us to the December 8th board meeting with approval of all the legal documents. So between now and December 8th, we'd have a lot of work to do to get it on the ballot. If we, if you did decide to do that on December 8th, we would start our campaign, so we would do the... So we would do the preliminary work, potentially meeting with different community forums. And then if you decided to put it on the ballot on December eighth, we would do a campaign, which meaning you'd be doing phone banking, you'd be walking door-to-doors, whatever, whatever that looks like for us, right after the first of the year. And we would do that until the March deadline. Our second option is to wait until November and put it on the November ballot, and I can get a timeline of when the board would have to approve the resolution for that. And no decisions need to be made today. This is just for your information, but we do need to. One thing I will add though, we are doing a poll. So on the board agenda tonight is an approval for the company that did our survey for us, I believe, two years ago. We are doing another survey, so we're working with them to, if it's approved, to go out and do a poll, just to kind of get the feel and see what the community can stomach initially before we push everything out.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Rocha.
I just want to bring up one more thing, and it bothers me because I want everybody to realize and understand that when we tried, that we lost fifty-four votes. You realize right now, the people that are, might have to really, we already are carrying, the people that live on this side, two bonds. And that's, I swear, if I live, and I've been doing this, it's part of me. But the other side, which is where all the new schools, according to people thinking that they're new, is what, twenty-five years old now or so? We're built with Melrose money. They have not put one penny in as up to now. We are carrying what we have for the last years. Fifty-four votes were lost by that side of the area. So we have to know that it takes all of you to educate, to realize that we're in dire need, because we're not getting it from the state. The state doesn't give us enough money. And you, and yet we talk about, I know about the air conditioning, I'm at high school, my kids are there playing basketball, I'm sweating and sweating, and the wind doors you open up, it doesn't matter, Antioch High is hot as can be. And the same thing, the bleachers are a mess too. I mean, you have to look at what has happened, and that bond issue had to go twice because Antioch High was, it was lost the first time. And look at, they had to replace that school, which was what, nineteen fifty-four or so? Finally, we have it replaced. It was a, I would say a dumb thing not to think that they had to put the air conditioner in the, in the gym when they did that, but it was bad advice at the time. So now we're facing that piece. But I'm just trying to tell you, I mean, we're not here to take money away from you illegally or against you. We're trying to do something for our schools, but when the money comes up, we can't spend it any other way but the way the bond says.
Yeah, so.
It's written down, word by word. So please tell the community, even now, as we're planning, to be part of what we're trying to do.
Yeah. And trustee Rocha, to second that, you know, I think one of the things that's important is that we show that we are stewards of, we are good stewards of, of the money that we receive. You know, I think at every possible opportunity that we have, it's important that we show the community. If we have a dollar, you know, we've, we've spent it in a way that, that it was intended for, and we're not just sort of using it for these other, other things. So as much as possible, you know, those public campaigns that trustee Hernandez was talking about, you know, some of those things.
And I just want to say, you know, thanks to Ken and his department, who have, who have done a lot of work. He's been here a year, a little over a year. And the amount of work that you can see that he's done at the school sites is incredible. The task is daunting, coming in with, with the facilities and the position that they were in. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we realize that there, there's a lot of work that's being out, done out there, and you can see from this PowerPoint, there's just a lot more to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trustee, and then, she was first, then.
Okay.
Thank you. Just thinking about a plan forward. So I know we haven't made a decision yet which ballot we wanted on, either March or November. But I will say, I am hopeful. Sometimes it's best to go slow to go fast. And so if we can have some kind of comprehensive plan where we actually talk to community members, learn about what folks want and need, and understanding what we need to do, like some things we just have to do. But to your point about, around perspective, like I know the comment was about the doors at M and O and wanting that to be secured. And, and then also, I've been to the schools where we have these huge gates up, and they are aesthetically unappealing and, and look institutional. And there are ways to secure schools without it looking institutional. And so, and what made me really sad, going to some of our schools, most of them are black and brown kids, and they look like they're in the facility, right? And I used to coach principals in the juvenile facilities. And some of the juvenile facilities look like that, and they shouldn't look like that for kids who are incarcerated either. But there are solutions, there are beautiful solutions for our kids. And so I think with that, we need to talk to the community about, about what that might look like so that we can have, we can, you know, de-institutionalize our schools and then also provide all the necessary updates that we have to have.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues on underscoring the importance of, of bond measures and the need to engage the community there. And I think we also need to underscore that traditionally, our bond measures that we've put forward have been projects and items that we as a district have put together and then said to the community, we need these approved, but we don't have to work off that paradigm, and we can shift to having it be a community-led set of projects and prioritizations, and have the community have a driving stake in it. Because when we talk about bond measures failing, we have to remember that we're asking the community to do this work of getting this measure passed, but how can we ask then to pass a bond measure that isn't fundamentally theirs? And so we need to find a way to make sure that the things that we're doing are having the community at the core, because that's how we build buy-in. Otherwise, we're asking you all to do work for things that we think are important, but we're not the ones that are at the school sites as often as parents, as often as students, and as often as teachers. And that's how we make sure that bond measures not only get passed, but do the work of the community. So I just want to kind of underscore that piece when we talk about, how do we make sure that bond measures pass, we make sure that it's a community bond measure?
All right, thank you all for that, for those comments and direction. So we're going to keep this.
Oh, I do have some questions on our bond measure as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You know, because I'd love to hear more about how we're finding other ways to engage the community outside of survey polls, because we know that there's some issues with survey polls that they'll tend to prioritize people that are digital natives and people that are typically more affluent community members who are used to responding to survey poll, polls. It also fails to kind of capture some of the emotion and the stories and the experiences of our community, which again, when we're thinking about putting together a community bond measure, they need to be led by the stories of the people in our communities, and that's how you build a movement, that's how you build drive forward. So I, I'm just concerned that like the survey results will just contain a snippet of our community, not the full, beautiful diversity of our community and the needs that they have.
Was that question directed, or is it just more of?
It was directed at, you know, what other things could we be doing to engage the community, and how can we maybe adjust some of these plans here?
I think we've kind of talked about different ways to, to address the community and do presentations, I think we're getting to that point. I know when I first started here a year ago, I worked with the directors to go to the each school site and get input on what, what, what needed to be done at their facilities. So we got input from, you know, needing carpet in their classrooms, to needing a new playground, to needing new technology. So that was one of the ways that we, I did initially. I think as a, as a cabinet and with superintendent Anello, we're working through, with, with the assistance of the poll, we're going to work through coming up with a plan. I know they did a master facility plan, and that's what Ken and I looked at to create these spreadsheets, to see like, facility-wise, what is needed, and then going out to the principals and, and having them share it with their school site councils and other, other forums that they have available at each school site.
Great, awesome, thank you, yeah. And you know, I'd love to, yeah, continue to get this conversation on how can we be creative in getting more community members involved in the decision-making as well, not just providing feedback, but how can they also be the drivers of this conversation?
And one of the things I did in my previous districts when I did this is that I contacted the principals at each school site and asked them to send me two or three names of key people that, you know, such as you, yeah, that, so that we can sort of huddle up a fair amount of people, but not too big, and then help, have them help push this, push it out as well.
So.
Excellent.
So what it sounds like is that there is some sort of interest in having some sort of comprehensive plan for the board to share with, with ourselves, obviously, and also with the community, around how we're going to approach this and what are the next steps moving forward. So that, I'm, I'm getting that impression from the board, is that fair to say?
I'd say more than an impression, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's important to get a plan from our superintendent, but also to involve our voices too. But I appreciate the outline, like the timeline, right? And how can it be more detailed, like, so on, you know, September this, we're going to have a community forum, or we're going to reach out to the principals. So just more information, because I think in order for, for us to have, to really be able to communicate and collaborate with the community, we're going to need a plan of action. Otherwise, we'll just be doing what we've done in the past, and that, and we don't want that because we didn't get the bond measure passed. So we need to have a comprehensive plan of how we're going to move forward. So our president will connect with the superintendent about that.
Okay, so moving us along, thank you for that, in that presentation and the information in the ensuing conversation. So we have item eight, which is hearings, and the item eight is sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials. Before we get there, we have one comment, and it's from Michael Sagehorn.
Good evening. I've been looking at the Williams reports for some time, and one of the glaring ones that seems to stick out is all these facilities challenges never seem to make it to those Williams reports. Over the years, I've served in the district. But recently, at Deer Valley High School, we have an issue of inequality going on within our high school, particularly in my department and social studies, is that only two academies at Deer Valley High School, the Law Academy and the Business Tech Academy, have computer cards paid for by grants that each of those lead teachers have acquired for a mix of sources. But students who are not in an academy, of which the non-themed academy is the largest percentage of students at Deer Valley, we do not have access to those, that computer technology. And the district has invested a tremendous amount of interest and money in creating online textbooks, online exercises, and learning, what's the right teacher way, learning practices around the access to the web. And we also have a particularly interesting one called the Document-Based Question Online. But none of my students can use these online web tools unless they use their phones that are paid for their, their parents for the most part. And I feel like there's inequality or inequity because at one point, we had every student at Deer Valley High School had their own computer, whether it was through the district or through their own homes. But now, those machines, I don't know where they are. So I, I don't rise to this as from an anger perspective. I mean, I'll teach circles around most people, that, you know, it's, it's just me. But truthfully, I think there's an inequality going on here that is not fair, you know? And, you know, we're a Title I school now, and, you know, my school, my students look like every other California high school along the coast. And I just don't think we're doing them the right service by perpetuating an inequity in not having enough machines. So I appreciate your time, but I report to a higher authority. I have to take my wife to the airport tomorrow morning, and if I'm not home, I'll be dead.
That last part was important, definitely. We don't want that to happen. Okay, so, Ms. Abara?
Yeah, so California Ed Code and the Williams settlement requires districts to hold an annual hearing on textbook sufficiency, and so that's what is before you this evening. All principals have submitted documentation that all students have their required materials, and the county, Contra Costa County Office of Education completed the full Williams settlement inspections of all of our thirteen Williams schools and confirmed to have sufficient instructional materials. And so that is, it's, it's the hearing that we're required to, to hold.
Okay, and on this one, there's no action items? It's more of a public forum to discuss?
Absolutely.
So then considering, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Sometimes I forget. All right, considering what our teacher came up and shared about technology and devices for kids, like how are we reconciling that? Because we're, we're passing our Williams, but then there are materials that kids.
We have printed copies. So if there was a situation where we did not have the printed textbooks, and then they would only, if students only had access to that, those materials online, then we would have to have that requirement of providing, ensuring that all students had laptops. But the, the way the Williams settlement worked is that as long as the students have the physical textbooks, that counted as tech, having sufficient instructional materials.
How do we determine which students get a device and which ones don't?
I mean, as far as I know, all of our computers, the laptops, have been out at our sites. In some cases, like we've learned that they were stored in a location that they didn't know were on a campus. That happened at the end of last year. And so it's a matter of working with the schools to see where this, where their laptops are, are they all functioning, and making sure that we get them deployed. Because my understanding, sitting next to IT, is that we do have the laptops. We just need to make sure that they're getting into the right hands.
And kind of like maintenance, this reminds me of like keeping up a building, right? How are we keeping track of and maintaining our devices so that, you know, in three years, we're like, ah, we don't have any, and we don't have any money? So what, what does that look like? And if you need to bring information back, it's fine, not trying to put you on the spot, just trying to understand, considering what he just shared, and then also thinking about our massive facilities needs. How do we avoid that with technology? And, and how do we keep account of this?
Yeah, well, technology tracks all the devices. We have them in the, a system that we track them all. And as far as sustaining them, it's important to keep it in the multi-year as a budget line item, because we will have to replace.
Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item nine, public presentations, there are none. Item ten, consent calendar, there is one comment.
And I, and we want to pull item G. And that is for, unfortunately, the Deer Valley turf project. The lowest apparent bidder withdrew his bid this week. And so we'll be coming to you at the next board meeting with the second lowest apparent bidder.
Okay, and so that, you want to pull it from consideration for this?
Yes.
For this, okay.
Consent items. I notice the language on the, on the agenda also said the lowest bidder. Is that literal, like the lowest bidder, or the lowest bidder that has good quality stuff?
No, the lowest bidder. So for construction, we're required to do the lowest bidder. As long as they meet all the requirements and we pre-qualified, then part of the issue is that one of their subcontractors was not pre-qualified with our district. But we are, for construction, we have, there's no option, it's the lowest apparent bidder.
And do, do, this is new for me. Do people ever look at the quality of the work? Because I can be the lowest bidder and not give you quality work.
Yeah, then we would throw out the bids if we, if they didn't pass references. So we have to pre-qualify them initially, so they, they go through a process of looking at, you know, several different things, our financial documents, have they done school districts before? There's, you know, there's a criteria that they go through. But if we feel like, we can't just, we can't just throw them out because we don't like them. We have to have a good reason to throw them out, but we do have to take the lowest. We have to have a good reason to throw them out, but we do have to take the lowest bidder.
And do we ever go and look at facilities that these people have worked on before? Like, for example, if you're another high school in another district had beautiful work, do we ever go and look just to see?
We I have done that in my previous districts with architects. So if I know that I'm building a gym, for example, like I did at Freedom, we would go visit other schools that had a gym similar to what we were looking for. We still can't pick the construction company. But we could go look at something that they have done, but we cannot pick it. It's it's the lowest bidder. The only there's there's a one way to do it, and it's called the least leaseback. Those have been challenged a lot lately. So construction companies are not willing to do that type of agreement anymore.
So that's not a practice here yet of going to observe other areas that they've created or built or?
I have not gone to see any of, because I've built turfs. This is a turf project, and I've done that in my other district, but I didn't go look at a construction company. The actual lowest apparent bidder was a construction company that I worked it with in Liberty, and they did a great job. I've done my research on the second lowest parent bidder, and they seem reputable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we do have one speaker card for this for the consent calendar. It's for item 10L. It's Dominique King. And just for clarity, 10L is the Career Technical or CTE Stakeholders Engagement Committee?
Yes. Okay, so my I have a lot of questions. So my first question being, what is the organizational framework and strategy for effectively coordinating a team of 35 individuals? If you look at what was in, I guess, the presentation, it's 1.2.1, which says the community should represent the district. And then 2.2, where it says it's recommended to seven to 11 people. And right now, you have about 35 people on that on that approval list to be a part of that that committee. My second question is, what, why has there only been one one parent included in this? One parent and community engagement, and our community here has a large union population, and you need people that have firsthand experience, technical training to sit on this community. So why are we not utilizing parents that have children within AUSD as well? My next question is, who will be entrusted with the responsibility of leading this initiative? And what will be their level of expertise? And will it involve an external third party so that authority dynamics are not established, which then make people not as willing to talk or engage when they feel like they have to answer to their boss in that committee committee and outside of that committee? My next question is, will this entire process be conducted with transparency and openness to the public? We've talked about this time and time again. The community really wants to be involved in the things that are happening within our community, especially with CTE training. How will you guarantee that this process is inclusive and equitable throughout its undertaking? And given the allocation of approximately $225,000, which is, I think, a $50,000 increase, 2022 was close to $160,000. My question is, for this career and technical training or committee, will the district conduct an honest evaluation of its past performance and any shortcomings in providing CTE training within this district? As we know, CTE training has often not been utilized most effectively. And you've talked to some of our, you know, educators that are doing this right now. Where they're educating is not up to par, but what they need to provide to provide a good quality education when it comes to CTE training. So is this district going to address the issues that it has now and in the past as they move forward within this committee? And just to leave with a quote, until we get equitable education, especially within our CTE training, we will not have an equal society. So thank you for the time.
And so, you know, Dominique, if you can get those questions, we can get some of those answered for you. Because in the nature of, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I can pull that item and ask that question right now and see if we have a response. Can you share a little bit about how the committee was put together?
The committee, I mean, I'm looking through the the pieces that are in the attachment. It is a committee that has been in existence. We've received Perkins funds for a number of years. So they have a pretty solid group that has been meeting over over the course of the years. They have done quite an extensive group, if we want to look at past practice and records in terms of increasing CTE programming, and they continue to improve. There's a lot of local partners that have been participating in this. There was a lot of questions, so I'm not sure specifically if there's any one that you would like for me to touch on. I can also, if if it's the will of the board to have questions brought, we can put it into a Friday board or, you know, a report down the line. But there's 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 so much work that this committee does and the forming of it and how it's progressed and what they're in planning to include and expand upon in the in the coming years. I would want to be able to include the experts that have been doing this work more deeply.
When do we next hear about the outcomes and the work of this committee so that we're able to, you know, see what's being done?
That would be something that we would want to, you know, that would be something at the board's request.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I'd definitely would love to request something like that. Career technical education is something that's very important to me. I mean, I'm a product of career technical education. I was part of an organization that's funded by Perkins Funding, host of Future Health Professionals, an organization for students that are interested in health care. And I myself have taken students to Washington DC to advocate for Perkins grant funding and talked to legislators there and trained students on how do we continue to advocate for more of this career technical education funding? So this is something that's very near and dear to me. So, yeah, I'd love to see.
And I know Director Wisely presented something last year, and I'm sure she'd be happy to come back and do that again if that's the will of the board.
All right, are there any other items from the consent calendar that the board would like to pull?
10H.
10H, would you like to discuss?
Yep, so 10H is about service agreement with PCR Consulting. And I appreciate the idea of hiring a company to examine and analyze the telecommunications and utility accounts. I thought that was actually pretty neat because a lot of times people get overcharged for things and don't even realize it. Part of the contract says that PCR Consulting will get 40% of any item that the district will be refunded for. So I'd imagine if there's, you know, an extra charge on utilities, they find it, we get refund, refunded back from whoever the utility company was, we give them 40%, right? All right, so the second part of that is if PCR, and I'm going to read it directly from the contract of PCR, identifies a future savings opportunity, and the client, us, implements a strategy identified by PCR or a substantially similar strategy, we will pay PCR an amount equal to 40% of the total net future savings. And so because I'm not familiar with this industry of doing audits and collecting money on any refunds that we receive, tell us a little bit more about if that's the industry standard, if that's something that the organization does. I've never heard of saying, once I leave you, you still got to pay me 40%.
So there's two parts to the contract. The first one is if they come in and they do the audit and they get 40% of the savings. And then if we continue with some of the strategies that they recommend, if we use their strategies, then then we pay them for future. I don't think our intention is to employ some of their strategies. I think our intentions is to get some assistance with some of our billing from AT&amp;T, for example, to see if they're overcharging us. I think my department did some reference checking on some of other districts and other areas that have used this company. And they have found like there's lots of fax machines, for examples, that we're still being charged for, but we're not using. And the billing is very cumbersome, so we wouldn't necessarily know. And it's going to be some work on sort of some of our maintenance department to see if the fax line is still being used. But that's just an example of something that usually comes up. So, yes, that's it.
So on that same vein, can you give us an example? You gave us some example of some findings that they could potentially do. Can you give us an example, just an anecdotal example of a strategy that might be used?
Yeah, I'm not really sure, actually, because I've never used them for a future strategy. I've only seen them used for an audit.
So is there a way, can we get that language taken off of there? My only concern is if we start employing things, whether they teach us or not, like it just becomes a part of the system and the way we do business that for 24 months or however many months it is, they're going to say, you you got money back? We want some of it, even when they're gone. And that just sounds.
And how would they verify?
Yeah, like, I don't understand that.
Another clarifying question on this. So is this the kind of service that we'd use as a one-time and find these discrepancies in rates? And then we'd be in a place where we'd be able to then kind of maintain that? Or do rates and these potential inaccuracies occur so frequently that it'd be something that we'd have to do ongoing?
It's a, in my experience and talking to the department, it's a it's a one-time. It's just like a one-time audit of basically our utility bills.
Got it, okay. All right. Any other questions or items to be pulled? I will entertain a motion.
Are we pulling anything or not?
No.
No, okay, we're.
Just G. We're pulling G, aren't you?
Yes.
You want to, oh, you want to pull it?
We're pulling G.
Yeah, we're going to pull G.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yes, so I'll entertain a motion for all items with the exception of item G.
I'll make the motion to approve all items on the consent calendar, A through P, with the exception of item G.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor.
Second.
I have a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. All right. Item 11, action items, is the 2223 unaudited actuals. I believe that's Ms. Robbins.
I have a hard time changing the. Okay, so this is our 2223, which is our last school year, unaudited actuals. So this means, basically, my department has worked really hard in closing the books. We're actually closing it as a process on our financial system as we speak. But this is, this will show you how we ended the year versus how we thought we were going to end the year. So this is just some background information on our enrollment from 1819 till now. And you can see we've been decreasing over the last few years. Except for 2223, we grew slightly, which is really good news. We're hoping that's going to be a trend, but we're still not certain that this year we're going to see an increase. For 2324, we did the average, and so you could see that there's a decrease used in our budget. Our ADA column, just as a reminder, our ADA is our average daily attendance. That's how we get funded, based on how many kids that are enrolled, how often they come to school. This is actually our actual ADA. So what what's happening now is because the state has given us some leeway to use some different ADA numbers so that we can improve our our revenue. And but for this purpose, this was our actual ADA that's happened for our district. So we're going into now our revenues. Over here to the left, you can see these are our categories in which we record our revenue. We have LCFF, which is our largest part of our unrestricted. We have federal revenues, state revenues, and local revenues. This first column here shows you what what were estimated actuals. The estimated actuals were what you saw when we adopted the budget in June. And when we're when we're preparing the budget for the future school year, we're also looking at the current year, and we're trying to estimate how we think we're going to end the year. So now that we've closed the books, we have our actuals. And so you can see that our revenue decreased slightly. The revenue decreased by just about $3 million, based on what we thought was going to happen. In our LCFF, we had a slight increase to our ADA, so we got a little bit of an increase there. Federal revenues, it decreased based on deferring revenue. So we thought we were going to have some revenue and spend it in the 2223 year, but we didn't actually spend it, so we have to defer the revenue to the following year. And so you'll see that when we come with the interim for the current year. We had a slight increase to state revenues, and that was a little increase of lottery and some early literacy money that we did not have originally in the budget. And then our other local revenues is, again, deferring revenue of funds we thought we were going to spend for our CalShape that we're deferring until next year. So now we're moving on to our expenditure categories. Over to the left here, you can see these are the categories in which we report our expenditures. Certificated, classified salaries and employee benefits has a decrease. That's primarily to vacancies that we had that we hadn't adjusted at estimated actuals and some savings from like subs that we planned for that we actually didn't spend. So books and supplies are another area that we decreased. And those, about half of that is money that's going to be spent on supplies that we thought we were going to receive by June 30, but we we did not. So we have to push them out into to the 2324 school year. The same thing with services and other operating expenses. About half of that is items or services that we thought we were going to have done and completed by June 30, and we did not. So about half of that is savings and half of that is money that's going to be spent in the future year. Our capital outlay is, again, HVAC projects that we have that we had planned for that did not get completed by June 30. So overall, you can see that our decrease in our total expenditures is about $18 million. This is just a summary of what I just reviewed with you. As a whole, their total revenue, total expenditures. We have transfers out to deferred maintenance that increased a little bit. And then you can see what our ending fund balance is. So our ending fund balance, what we thought was going to be 70 million, is now 84 million, and we'll describe the components of the ending fund balance and what that is made up of. This just kind of describes what I just talked about, the differences and the changes to each of the either revenue categories or the expenditure categories. This slide shows the fund, the general fund, Fund 01, in a restricted and unrestricted. So the first couple of slides that we looked at is everything combined. It's important to just note that part of our budget is unrestricted and part of it is restricted. So you can see, when you look down to our ending fund balance, half of it is restricted and half of it is unrestricted. This is the details of the components of ending fund balance. The top part shows you which restricted programs have money that will be carried over. You can see, for example, we have this learning recovery emergency block grant. So we're still dealing with one-time money. So that's a block grant, if you remember, that we got last year. It was actually supposed to be, I think, double that money. And then the state, as part of the budget for this year to balance it, he took the money away. So good thing we didn't spend it, but that money we have until 2028, and it's going to backfill some of the positions that we had that we're spending on ESAR and the when the ESAR money goes away. The bottom part here, we have home-to-school transportation. At the end of last year, we got an amount, which is a new program that we're having to implement in transportation. So we are looking at piloting three different school sites because we're now required, if we take this money, we're required to transport regular ed kids to school. So we're working with our transportation to come up with a program. Nate was here a couple of months ago with our with our plan that was that goes along with this money, but that is something that we're required to do. We have some ending fund balance that's reserved for E-rate expenditures. We are eligible for quite a bit of E-rate money, but we have to also put some money into it. And the E-rate money is helping improve our technology infrastructure. So the state has a program that they're giving us money, and then we have to put some money in to improve our infrastructure. We're working on security cameras. So Ken talked a little bit about security cameras. We have secured quotes for security cameras for every school site. So we're in. So we're either improving what's there or we're placing new ones. And so we have some money that we got from the COPS grant, and we also have to match that. So there's a reservation for security cameras that, again, didn't get done last year, but is now going to get done this year. So that money is going to be set aside for that. We have HVAC improvements. We have some carryover for supplemental and concentration money. We have some assigned money for payroll. One month of our payroll is about 16 million. About half of that is money that's going to be spent on things that we did not spend in the prior year. So overall, as a percent of our expenditures, our ending fund balance is about 31%. Half of it being restricted and half of it being unrestricted. Is there any questions on the general fund? I can go through one more slide and do all the other funds and take questions, or I'm happy to take them now.
So just for public consumption, can you give us a very, very, very simple response to the difference between restricted and unrestricted funds?
Yes. So unrestricted funds generally, except for supplemental and concentration, comes with no strings attached, so to speak. There's no restrictions to it. Restricted funds are just that, they're restricted for a specific purpose. For example, special, special ed money is a good example, and that's the largest part of our restricted money, Title I.
And how is, how were those categories managed? Like, who, is there a checks and balance system to ensure that restricted funds are restricted and they're used for that purpose? Unrestricted funds, that they're used in an appropriate way?
Yes, there is audit. We have an auditor that audits us every single year on federal and state guidelines.
All for public consumption?
Yeah.
Other questions from the board at this point?
Yeah, can you walk us through why we have leftover supplemental and concentration grant money?
That's from previous year carryover money that we had not spent. We don't necessarily always spend it all. So if we have, for example, if we have positions that are budgeted in supplemental and concentration, and we haven't filled the position, then we'll have money that's left over. And we have, we had a pretty large vacancy, vacancy rate, especially during COVID, when we didn't fill certain positions because kids weren't here. So if there might have been like a paraprofessional, for example, that kids weren't coming to class, so we wouldn't fill it, so we have money left over.
How much flexibility do we have on adjusting that if we notice that we're having some of this left over?
So the flexibility now is that you have to carry it over and spend it still in supplemental and concentration. You can't just take it out of there and spend it somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah, I guess.
It's not flexible, really, right?
I guess my, 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 the root of my question is, right, like supplemental and concentration grants specifically is supposed to be money that's targeted towards our most needy, neediest students. And so I want to see and make sure that we're spending that money on our needy students, on the needs that they have now, so that we're addressing those needs as quickly as possible. But I definitely understand, right, if we're putting this for positions and we're having trouble filling those, that that totally makes sense. But, you know, also thinking like, you know, if we're having so much trouble, should we maybe pivot and try to fill some needs that we can spend that money on now to address needs sooner?
Oh, we absolutely do that. There's a lot of one-time expenditures that come along with some of the savings that we see, right? Because if we, if we have a vacant position and we know we're going to have some savings, we're planning on filling the position the next year, so that means they're not going to have savings. So that's a one-time pot of money that we have, that we would, might be able to do technology. You know, based on our goals, we look at where else doesn't any money need to be spent? So we absolutely have a process for that.
Perfect. And then the last question I have is, do we have any money at risk for not being spent on a timeline that we're supposed to spend it on?
No.
I know we have, no.
No.
Perfect.
Absolutely not.
General budget question for the school district. For those large pots of money, for example, if we set them into some sort of interest-bearing account, is that pot, we can't do that? Okay, that's what I thought.
Our money sits with the county treasurer. The only option we have is what they call a LEAF account, which sometimes gives us extra, a higher interest rate, but lately it hasn't been. So no, we absolutely cannot. So let me, I'll go ahead and go. So this is other funds. So the district operates more than just the general fund. We have several other funds that we operate. For example, the third one down, adult ed, is in its own fund. It has its own funding, it has its own restrictions. So I won't go through every of them, but this kind of gives you a little bit of a description of all the other funds. One other thing is like we have a building fund, Fund 21, and that's where the bond, the bond funds would go. So if we passed a bond, all the proceeds go specifically in that fund, and all our expenditures get recorded in that fund, and that's what gets audited based on the ballot measure. So here's just a summary of what has taken place for 2223 for all the other funds. So you can see where we started with the beginning balance, how much revenue we got for each fund, what the expenditure was, and what our ending fund balance is. This is just a quick summary of the projects that were just now completed in the last year for Measure C. We do have a little bit of our bond money left that will be doing some of the projects that did not get completed at Antioch High School. And so you can see that Antioch Middle School had the boiler and the chiller that Ken talked about. John Muir had the roof replacement, and then Kimball also had the roof replacement. So those were the last few projects from that bond. So I will take more questions, comments.
Okay. Trustee Hack?
No.
Trustee Hernandez?
I think I got all my questions answered so far.
Okay. Trustee Dr. Lathan?
No.
Thank you.
Trustee Rocha? Okay. Thank you. And thank you for you and your team putting in the hard work on this presentation.
I did fail to mention Mia and her fabulous team that works really hard. As you know, we start budget, we start budgeting in January, basically. So they're doing two sets of books, and then the last couple of months of trying to work with all the sites and the departments to get their POs closed and try to figure out exactly where we're ending the year. So thank you, Mia, to your team.
Thank you so much for all of this work.
Absolutely.
All right. And there's no action on this item.
Mm-mm.
All right, so next up is item 12, items for information discussion and action by board. The first is.
Oh, we do approve the un-audited actuals.
Oh, okay. There we go. So I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the 202223 un-audited actuals.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor and proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. So thank you for that catch. Yeah. Item 12, board bylaws, bylaw 9240 for board development. Item A. I think this was the one we brought back. So trustee Lathan, trustee Dr. Lathan?
Yeah, so we brought this item back. This is for, I think trustee Hernandez put it back on the, yes, on the agenda. Would you like to?
Yeah, I can kind of lead us through where we're at. So at our last meeting, right, we did the revision to our board development policy to increase our board development amount. In the interim, as we were going to bring back the much more robust policy that Vice President Lathan put forward. And so attached on this item is that draft that Vice President Lathan presented, and I think now's a good time to discuss if we like it as it appears and if there's any edits to it, so that we can move forward on revising our, this policy one more time. Was there anything else I missed, Vice President Lathan?
Mr. Chair? Does that not tie in with the governor's proposal? I mean, was that something that we were going to go into, a governor's proposal?
We also talked about that at our last meeting, that we were going to have that discussion here.
Yeah.
But I mean, no, what I'm getting at is that the item 9240.
Ninety, okay.
Doesn't it have to be included in our governor's, when we get a governor's, governance proposal, proposal decided on what we want to do? I mean, isn't it part of our ongoing?
Um.
What I'm getting at is if we're going to get the training, okay, that's what we're going next, right? Isn't this part of our training, this board development piece of the 9240?
Yes, so the way that I read this was, is that we are required to have training as opposed to specifying what training we would have.
Yeah, the board governance that we have coming up for our next item is an item to discuss as a board, you know, what we want in terms of additional governance, support from other consultants, whereas this is the policy that we use to determine how us individually as board members will seek out additional training and continue to develop our skills as board members to make sure we're serving the community effectively.
And I just, I want to just talk about kind of the difference between the two and not negating the hard work that the previous board put in. I think the last one was revised in like 2017 or so. But the current updates provide information on the types of professional learning that are important for school board members, so it's not necessarily outlined in the first board policy. So that's outlined in this updated version. And all of these can be done through CSBA or other organizations that provide training for board members. The updated policy also includes metrics on professional learning quality. So for example, we had a study session and we never had a conversation about our experience in the study session, and this is something that effective boards do. And so just put it in our board policy in terms of how effective the sessions are, and that I think could help us make decisions in the future about whether or not we continue to work with groups of people or how they can kind of reshape it to meet our needs. Another area that's been updated is board members who attend trainings or conferences shall provide verbal or written summary. I think that is so awesome. I know I've been to several professional learnings, and I haven't had an opportunity to share with the board, right? And I think whenever we go and learn something new, we should bring it back to each, bring it back. We often ask teachers to do that, or site administrators, they come back and share what they learned, so we should too. And so those are some of the areas that are updated. And plus, updated amount per person. And we can make that decision in terms of whether or not we want to increase our board, the amount of money that we receive for training. I think this is really important in terms of if we're expecting our teachers and staff to learn, that we should be providing ourselves the appropriate funding so that we can go and learn and be stronger board members individually and then collectively.
Trustee Hack?
Um, I'm still thinking about it.
Okay. All right, so the only question that I had was, in this policy, it says a minimum of $9,000 per board member. Another option is an open source, so I think before we finalize, I think we should make a determination around what that looks like.
Mr. Chair, I thought we had already, that the superintendent provided to us that it was going to be 5,000 per person.
So that was the interim, right?
Okay, so are we not staying with five? Are you tying, do we want to increase it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so the, so in the governance meeting, in the governance meeting that we had, the conversation was that we would discuss what the final number would be. And the conversation in the last meeting was that that $5,000 was sort of a placeholder until the board finalized whatever decision we were going to make in term of, in terms of that dollar amount moving forward.
Okay, up to now, it's been 3,000.
Mm-hmm.
And so we're not talking about 5,000. According, you know, I would want to make sure that in the budget, we could handle anything that we increase at more than five. So up to now, I understand the 5,000 was comfortable in the budget.
I don't think we had sufficient information about that in terms of like not a presentation or information about what the budget could hold. So I think that's something that we would definitely need. I don't think it should hold up this process because we've been doing this for months, like literally kicking the can down the road instead of just either approving it or not approving it, taking action on it. So we could go with 9,000, we could go with five, the five that we've already agreed to, and adopt this policy or not, like vote on it. And then have Ms. Robbins at some point come back and talk to us about a board budget.
So would it be possible? Go ahead.
What I'd like to do is postpone this discussion until the next meeting when her superintendent is here. She's part of that process.
We can also ask Ms. Robbins right now if, you know, and it's okay if you don't know, but if off the top of your head, you know whether we could, whether 9,000 per board member would be something that seems like we could handle in the budget.
I, I don't think that it will be an issue, but I would have to go back and look at the budget. I haven't, I've been, we've been closing the books and looking at the ending fund balance. You know, there's probably some room for some one-time expenditures. But if you're talking about ongoing every year, that might be a concern too, because a multi-year might look different than the current year.
May I suggest that we postpone to the next meeting to have that information available to us prior to coming to the meeting or discussion, where you know, you know, you're reacting to the question and you can't just pick it off the top of your head and the superintendent's not here, which I think should be part of the conversation also. So for two weeks.
So even with this language here, we would have to bring this back because it doesn't necessarily specify $9,000 as the maximum. So that language would have to be clearly defined. And so I'm hesitant to vote on this because, again, we would say yes with amendments, and that conversation would still happen. So it would still be a vote in the next meeting.
Is it two weeks?
Well, I mean, in our next, yeah.
We can make those amendments right now in real time and then, you know, I'd be fine, you know, I'd suggest let's make this approval with a $5,000, which is something we have already approved at our last meeting, so it's within our budget. Yeah, and I think, I think, because it's important for us as board members to model lifelong learning, because that's what we expect of our students, and we want to be lifelong learners and continue to train and develop and become better board members. And so, and we've had this discussion on these things multiple times, and we have a habit on this board of postponing and, and we're kicking things down the road and saying, well, let's look at it again, let's look at it in two weeks and four weeks, because we've done that already with this policy several times. And I don't think there's anything that's holding us back from being able to do this. And also, we can always revise policy. There's nothing that says that we can't revise policy at our next meeting.
And so.
What is, are we looking at the one that's here, this in our, in our, in view? Is this the policy that we're looking at?
I'm not sure I understand your question. There's two.
You're on the wrong one.
Yeah.
It's 9290.
Yeah. So there's the previous one, and then there's the current?
Yeah, that's what I'm. That was, that was the one you proposed, but what about the one we had already? That's the one I was looking at. That was the one in front of it, or in top of it, or whatever you want to call it. See, I'm not ready for this either.
My suggestion would be, like, I don't, I can make a motion, we can make a decision and move forward. I just don't think if we continue to, we'll keep bringing this back for another two years, and it's not, we don't need to do that.
I will entertain a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to pass the updated board policy 9240 on board development.
Should we specify the?
With the amount?
Yeah.
With the amount of $5,000.
And removing the section highlighted in yellow.
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So I have a motion on the floor, properly seconded, to adjust.
With the $5,000.
To accept, yeah, to accept the $5,000 limit. It sounds like we might need a roll call vote.
Yeah.
Trustee Hack?
Um, yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
No.
Vice President Lathan?
Yes.
President Lewis?
Yes. So the motion carries for one. Okay. Next up is 12B.
Mm-huh.
The governance models. So the district conducted a request for qualifications, an RFQ, RFP, for professional consulting services related to the development of a board governance model. Four proposals were received. At the August 23, 2023 Board of Education meeting, the board selected two finalists and requested presentations at their meeting on September 13, which is today. At this time, the Council of Great City Schools has withdrawn their proposal. So it sounds like we only have one?
Mm-huh.
Okay.
And yes, oh, poor president. Tonight, you, I believe, have Dr. Mary Lou Wilson, who is here from the Education Support Services Group. And so I believe she is here to make a presentation to you.
You have a lot of tall employees around here. Good evening, President Lewis, trustees, staff members, members of the community. It's a real pleasure for me to be here tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to. and I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you a little bit more about our services and what I think we can assist you in building your governance model. My name is Mary Lou Wilson and I am a consultant with ESS. And as Dr. Martinez mentioned, that's Education Support Services. We are affiliated with the attorney group, Atkinson, Anderson, Loyah, and Rudd. We consider ourselves a boutique organization and we call it a boutique organization because we keep our organizations small. We do that on purpose because we don't want to take on a lot of clients. We want to work with a small group so that we can keep it close and personal. So that in the event that I become the consultant working with you on developing your governance core, I would be able to work specifically with the board president and the superintendent in person as I am a local resident in the Napa Valley. We believe that we are able then in that small venue to collaborate directly and truly fine tune and develop practice that support and meet the needs that you are truly looking for. When I looked at your request for proposal, I identified a few areas that you said you were seeking as far as an outcome with regards to your governance work. You wanted it to develop a board governance model. You wanted to meet in person. You wanted to have some samples provided to you of exceptional governance. You wanted to gain input from each of you. So you wanted someone to gather information and share out because it's difficult for all of you to talk with each other. You want lots of communication and collaboration. And ultimately, you wanted to end the year with a developed, created board governance model that you would then commit to. In response to that RFP, as a member of ESS, we collectively, and I believe, that the principles and framework found in the book, The Governance Core, written by Davis Campbell, a longtime CSBA employee and writer of most of Masters in Governance, and Michael Follin, that framework would meet the needs around growing your governance core. Along with a number of things that have already occurred in your district that you have in place that will support and guide and has been guiding your work. So there is lots happening here that is really excellent. And your employees and your community have done much work for you. When you look at the Governance Core handout that's in front of you, there's, it's a graphic organizer. And the overview talks about that well-defined approach, a governance mindset, coherence, a positive organizational culture, responsibilities, roles and responsibilities, the tools that you need, and then relationships around the outside edge. Because in my opinion, and many that I speak to in research, if you're not building relationships, what are you doing? You're breaking them. So that whole relationship piece is a critical component to your governance work among each other, with your superintendent, with your school community, and with the greater community. Digging a little bit deeper into that governance core, a commitment to good governance is critical. You have to commit to that. You have to have a shared moral imperative that drives the work of you as the five board members, you as the five board members with your superintendent, then with your employees, and your greater school community. Highly effective trustees with a governance mindset will move forward a positive governance core. And finally, in that piece, coherence, everyone working on the same page with the same goals in mind to move the organization forward. With regards to mindset, it is so critical that everything you do, and I've heard it tonight, everything you do, children come first, adults come second. Children have to come first in a school district. That is my mantra. I've always worked with, nothing you do for children is ever wasted. You also have to watch the budget. You're doing that. You need to have long-term goals. I'll talk about that in just a moment. You need to build and maintain that governance infrastructure. I'll talk a little bit more about that. You need to support your staff, support them more, and support them more. And I've heard you saying that tonight. What can we do to help? What can we do more to make sure you have what you need? You have to hold the organization accountable. And you need to keep the community informed. And I've heard lots of those things already tonight. Governance is systematic and strategic. And you have to maintain looking at those systems and looking at the strategies. As a governing board with that strategic piece, we need to collectively remember that we aren't, board members aren't the doers. You're the overseer. You're the governance. You have an incredible staff that are the doers. You also need to have that deep understanding, understanding of the structures and systems within your school district, the goals of your school district, the curriculum. You were getting a deep understanding tonight on maintenance and operations so that then you can make well-educated decisions that have data and evidence. And you have been doing some of that already. And then finally, manner. People watch you. What you say, how you respond, verbal and nonverbal, are critical components to effective governance. So within that, there are some processes, some tools that once finally developed and agreed upon, support the idea of a strong governance core. And you, you read about those in our proposal. Certainly, adopted principles, meeting norms, agreements on how you're going to act and when you're going to act are critical components to an effective team, a group of individuals coming together to be a governance team. And then ensuring that you have board discussions, which are different than study sessions, different than special meetings, discussion meetings, that you have that governance handbook that is built and lived day after day and revised each year to meet the needs of either changes in goals, changes in new board members, changes in perhaps board policy, because all of that goes into your handbook. That annual self-evaluation that causes you to, in public, review and evaluate how you've been working and how you, what you're doing well and what you can do better. And then continuing education, as you just talked about this evening. So I want to tell you a quick story. I am a recently retired superintendent in the, this area, in the Napa Valley. And when I joined the school district in 2014, I, I, I learned that I had principals with goals that were different than executive cabinet members with goals, that were different than the superintendent's goals, that were different than the board's goals. And all of the goals were good, good, solid work. It was just so many things happening and everyone moving in different directions. And what I heard from the board as I joined St. Helena Unified was a reaffirmed desire to ensure that everything that they did was student-focused. Students came first in everything, academically, emotionally, and physically. So I started looking at, okay, we've got to look at a system here because I can't manage all of these different goals popping off in different places. It's like popcorn machine. And so looking at existing resources and what we had in place, I found our local control accountability plan. And within our LCAP, we had a set of goals with strategies and data and expected outcomes and accountability. And all of those pieces around students and student success. So as I worked with the governing board to identify those goals as our district-wide goals, we also provided the board with monthly updates on one or two of the goals. And so front and center, every month, the board was, and the community was learning more and more, getting a deeper understanding of what was happening with regards to our local control accountability goals. That not only helped you to learn and get deeper, it also allowed you to hold us accountable. So that accountability piece is important, of course. And why do I share that story with you? I share it because I believe that within your school community, you have a lot of what you already need to take your governance work and make it even greater than it is today. You have LCAP goals? I took a look at them. You presented them to the community in early June and you approved them in late June of this year for the 2324 school year. And within those five goals, student achievement is number one, and it's, it runs the gamut of different kinds of students, different curriculums, ELA and math. There's measures, there's data collection, there's reports that will be made. You have school connectedness that includes safety and school social emotional learning. You have college and career readiness. You have 21st century learning that includes technology and also facilities. And then you also have support for high need students. So you have a comprehensive set of goals within this community with metrics built that your team did for you. Human Resources gave information on highly-qualified teachers. Ed Services built a lot of the work around ensuring student achievement. Business Office was involved because they put the budget in. All of the work is there for you. So if you take the work that you have already and build upon that, then you're able potentially to get on the same page with everyone, ensure that your schools, your cabinet, and the board are moving in the same direction. And when you're all moving in that same direction, you have a coherent, coherent model that supports student success. That's the golden key right there. A coherent model that supports student success. Just a couple of thoughts for you from Campbell and Follin. Your work as a board member is not a sprint. It is a marathon. It is a marathon. You have lots of work to do. And with transformational change, which I work with doctoral students on since 2012, with transformational change, it takes three years, five years, sometimes even seven years. You have a plan, you have those action items, you work a while on it, you take a look at it, you fine tune it, continuous improvement. So you are in a marathon. So continue to breathe and I applaud you for the work that you do. I also encourage you to stay strategic and focused. And don't forget, children come first. Develop that mindset that allows you to excel in governance. Remember that it's a system and it's a strategic job. And you have to dig deep. And then finally, what I said earlier, if you are able to work system-wide to develop a, an organized set of goals that are agreed upon by all members of your community and you're all moving in one direction, you will find success, you will ensure success for your children. You have a lot of work to do. You've had a lot of work tonight. I appreciate being here. I trust that you'll make the decisions that are best for your community and for you as your five-member board and your superintendent. I'd be willing to answer any questions I can at this time.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Trustee Hack?
Okay, let's say we approve this. What's the timeline going to be?
The time, that would be, that's going to be up to the President Lewis and the superintendent. I would be available to meet and develop that timeline. My understanding is that the goal is to do this work during the 2324 school year. And so as quickly as we're able to, you know, gather together and start the work, we would, we would do that.
Okay. Yeah, that's an opening and answer. And that's, I guess, we'll start with.
Right.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, that's fine.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah. Can you share more about where the data-driving portion in some of the things we'll be doing fits?
Tell me a little bit more about your question.
How will we be diving into data of the district and how will we be going about that data, analyzing that data?
Governance work, developing a cohesive governance team, is not necessarily about diving into data. You're diving into data in your study sessions around student achievement, your study sessions around any aspect of hiring practices. I heard a request about that this evening. So understanding and developing potentially a governance calendar that, that sets aside time for you to look at data and, and examine it, that would be an outcome of the governance work. The actual looking at data and analyzing data wouldn't be something you would want me to do. You want your staff to bring you data and work with you on data.
So, yeah, will we be developing goals during these sessions?
Goals to, tell me goals about what?
Our like district priorities and where we'll be focusing on and how we'll be supporting students.
Okay. So my recommendation would be at this time that you have a set of goals that you approved in June for the 2324 school year embedded in the LCAP. And embedded on those pages in the LCAP, you not only have goals, but you have, you have where you are, and you have success indicators, you have strategies to implement, you have budget aligned, and then you also have expected outcomes. That data has to be reported to you every year. Whether that's all reported to you in one meeting or you break that up into smaller chunks, that's something that you and your superintendent and staff would need to make a decision about. So you already have embedded in your work, the expectation that data is reported to you. It, it would not be my recommendation that you would identify and develop completely new and separate goals from what the LCAP already affords you. And thinking further into the future, as you look at those five goals and you as a governance team learn more about what you collectively see as needs of the district, you might consider working with the superintendent and identifying changes to those goals in the future for the 2425 school year. It, it would be, in my opinion, it would be cross-purposes to have additional goals at this time.
So will, will we be using those goals to drive our conversations or will that be a separate thing then, that we do afterwards?
So again, governance work is all about developing the governance team and ensuring that you all are on the same page as far as who you are, what you stand for, and how you operate. Not that you don't have your own opinions because you absolutely do. And that's, that's the beauty and the joy of a school board. Governance work is, is defining how, how you operate, putting it into print so that there's a longevity and an understanding around the, the transformation of your school board. And that you are then able to, people can invent, can depend on what they, what to expect out of that, that board. So developing that strategic mind, developing the systems for the school board, understanding, developing that handbook that will, you live on the district website and hold all of the goals and be updated on a regular basis. That's, that's governance work as I responded to the request for proposal, which you, you advertised.
Where does values such as racial equity fit into the work that we'll be doing as a governance team?
In the, so again, that's going to step outside of this governance work. In the event, so within the LCAP, one of the goals, I believe it is Goal Five, that talks about higher need students. So within that goal, if there is not, so there are no LCAP police that say that, you know, if you make a change or you don't, you know, they don't arrest you or anything like that. So if there isn't some, something happening within equity within your five goals today, and I, while I looked at your LCAP, I didn't read 117 pages, thank you. I didn't read all 117 pages. So if there needs to be a fine tune to one of your goals that would allow your, you and your superintendent to identify additional work that you want to do, that absolutely can be done, you know, by any school board.
And then what tools are we going to use? Because you talked about holding our organization accountable. What specific tools are we going to be using to hold our organization accountable?
Board presentations where you are hearing from your, from your, your employees on particular goals and they're reporting to you and giving you the data, much like you heard tonight, on the, the data around schools. on the data around schools, which is very important, and, you know, my passion are children, very important, but you heard the data on schools. And so you're holding your maintenance department accountable by them reporting, identifying the needs, you're looking at a bond or other ways to potentially fund that. So you're holding the organization accountable at that governance level, so you're not the doer, remember, you are the governance team that oversees. And ultimately, you have one employee, and that's your superintendent, right? And so if, ultimately, if what you're seeing, and what you're hearing, and what's happening with your students, that needs to be, if you're happy with that, then everybody celebrate, of course. If you're unhappy with that, that's a conversation that you need to have with your superintendent.
Got it. Yeah, and so I ask these questions because I'm a CSBA Master's in Governance graduate, and I have a copy of the Governance Core. And we know that the two most powerful tools that we have to hold ourselves accountable is the evaluation of our board and the evaluation of our superintendent.
Exactly.
And so I think if we're building good governance, I'm a little surprised why that's not part of what we'll be doing to build a good governance practices.
Why self-evaluation wouldn't be?
Is that going to be part of what we're doing?
Yes, yes.
Both the board self-evaluation and the superintendent evaluation process?
What I mentioned earlier was the board self-evaluation, and in the event that, as I mentioned also, pretty flexible and can work to support the needs. So if currently, there is not a superintendent evaluation that's in place, and superintendent, sorry, you just got a, you just got a new job. President Lewis and the superintendent, you know, work with me to ensure that there is an evaluation tool in place, that's something that we could, you know, add into the contract.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I think just, because this work is really great, and it is very important, the governance work and building all these pieces, this just feels different from what we discuss. Like, I think this is work that we should and need to do at some point, but it doesn't feel like the work that we discussed as a board, that we were going to put together the student outcome-focused governance model, not a set of governance norms. So that's just, I think, my last comment here is that this doesn't feel like what I thought we had agreed upon.
And as I said, I trust that you'll make the right decision for you. This is my response to the RFP that was sent out.
Got it. Appreciate it.
Trustee Lee.
Thank you for sharing your proposal. My comment is more just a comment for discussion, just to kind of piggyback on what Trustee Hernandez just mentioned, which is we agree to a student-focused, student-focused outcomes governance model. And also, I understand what you're talking about in terms of your idea around governance, and with the broadening of racial equity, with the broadening of racial justice and all of that, there are organizations and people who are expanding what, not necessarily the role of a governance body, a school board, but is more of thinking about the values, and how do we actually include that in the conversation? And that's not what I'm hearing right now. I'm hearing very traditional, and I know it works for many districts, considering most of our kids are kids of color, considering we have traditionally had low outcomes, poor outcomes for kids, all kids, white kids, Asian kids, black kids, Latino kids, our special education, we have, you know, some challenges there. I feel like we need to really focus on what we said we were going to focus on, which is a student-focused outcomes, and I might be saying it, it might be student outcomes-focused governance model. That is my suggestion.
Trustee Rocha.
It's interesting is that I agree with you on the LCAP. I mean, it seems to me that if parents and everybody got together to develop the LCAP for the students, that is being driven for students, that we should be similar in what our goals are. So I kind of understand what you're trying to say, that we should have similar goals or support what goals that are there, and then add whatever we want to add to it. That's where I look at the governance part of what you're saying. I don't think that that's the same thing as what you're saying either. I mean, I think you have a different opinion. And so I'm just saying to you that under this proposal, I like the idea of following the LCAP goals and trying to develop the board on our own goals that match, or at least expand.
Thank you. I'm curious if perhaps what the collective group, along with your superintendent, perhaps the request for proposal wasn't accurately depicting what you were looking for. And if that is the case, you know, again, I trust that you'll make the right decision.
And that is actually true. Like, I didn't know it was happening until it was happening, the RFP. And so, and that kind of shows kind of the way we govern, right? We haven't always talked through, and that's what we need support with, is like, how do we actually focus on student learning and make those connections and be transparent? And so that is part of the work as well.
And that is governance work. What you just said is absolutely governance work. It's around, you know, having those conversations in a study session or a special meeting where you actually can talk about, how are we going to operate? How are we going to discuss things? How are we going to make decisions? And that, along with, it sounds like perhaps some other issues, you know, there's some work to do.
Clyde, what do you think? What are your comments? No, yours.
Okay, so, you know, in looking at the proposal, I'm curious, you worked in St. Helena. Have you worked in a district that mirrors Antioch Unified?
A pretty similar district. I worked in Fairfield Unified, Fairfield-Susun. I was in the Ed Services Department and also in the Human Resources Department, a little bit larger than Antioch. And then in Southern California, I worked in a K-8 district in Cajon Valley, which was largely Hispanic.
And in those districts, what were some of the, I mean, obviously, you don't know everything, that you probably don't remember off the top of your head. What were some of the primary challenges in those districts that you remember?
In Fairfield, we had poverty, severe poverty. We had our, when I worked in the Ed Services Department, I was responsible for our Title I schools. And they were 100% Title I schools, and that was back when there was the whole choice program, and people were fleeing, you know, trying to change their children's schools. The equity of service was another issue. You know, there are just a multitude of issues that met our students. Now, you said St. Helena, and when you said that, I saw the, oh, what was it? So in St. Helena, 43% of our students were qualified for free or reduced lunch. And I had many of my families who were living in backhouses and were working for other families in the community. I had about 27% that were English language learners. So we did have a number of areas that were of great concern.
Yeah. And so that illustrates the point. So, you know, my question, so that was more of a rural sort of environment, whereas Antioch is more of an urban environment. And urban and rural challenges differ. Some of the populations may overlap, but the challenges are different. So in terms of conceptualizing the way we move forward in developing governance models, can you help us understand how you would help us to conceptualize the development of governing models that would address the needs of our community?
So, the governance principles are governance principles regardless of, you know, Davis and Michael wrote the book for the state of California. They wrote the book and developed the principles, whether it's, you know, 10-school district, a one-school district, or a 25-school district, whether it's, you know, all Caucasian or all African-American. The principles around being an effective governance team don't necessarily change. Now, once you have developed that effective team, that highly functional team that's working in cohesion along with your staff and your community, that's when you're really going to make a difference for your children. That's when you're going to be able to put into place additional goals, committees, work that can help to move forward and address the needs of your community. Yeah, the principles around strategies and, you know, systems and mindset and manner are the same for any, any community.
So what I'm hearing is that there are essentially steps towards a goal. You know, if we think about goal mapping, there are steps towards developing or reaching or attaining a goal. And what I'm hearing for you is you're that, the governance model that you're developing or that you sort of use as that initial step of saying, okay, well, in order for us to get to the point where we're having conversations about the specific needs of kids, first we need to understand how we, we as a board work together with the principal, superintendent and the other parties. Am I understanding you correctly?
Yes.
It's absolutely logical that that would be the step that we would do initially as a board. And then you go from there.
Correct.
Whatever direction it takes us.
When, if you think about a highly functional sports team, you know, they've worked a lot, they've worked diligently to develop, it's pretty funny I'm using sports, right? Because I'm not a sports person. But if you think about a sports team, because, you know, they have coaches, and they watch the tapes, and they watch the tapes, and they work diligently to be a cohesive team. A team, a group of people who are just thrown on a football field and said, okay, play football, they're not necessarily going to have as much excellence as that group who have worked together, talked with each other, developed their team to become highly successful. So the work starts with you as the board and the superintendent to be a high-functioning team, so that then you can move into the other layers of your organization.
And your organization is just that, that initial sort of coordinating of the minds, if you will?
Coordinating of the minds, that's the very beginning. Identifying norms of behavior, protocols for how you do the things that you do. And then developing and publishing a governance handbook. And I also recommend a governance calendar that maps out the entire school year, and the superintendent and the board president work to develop that along with staff to identify what happens when, so that there is a plan. Because the worst thing that can happen with employees is that you, they feel like they've been tricked, or they've been gotcha. So if you have that cohesive plan of, there's an EL report in February, there's a student services report in March, you know, so you have a plan of what reports you're going to receive over the course of the year, you know when that's going to happen. So that governance calendar is another piece. And that's open to the community as well, so they can look at that calendar and know when something is going to be happening. So that's another piece of the work.
Trustee Hack, did you have a final thought? Because you said you wanted to come back to you.
I have a final thought, but it's not a thought. I think in reality, I appreciate your presentation, I do, and I think it makes absolute sense. With our superintendent here, you know, that is sort of clouds the process, I would like to suggest, thank you very much for presenting to us, but I would think the board should use the superintendent and reach a decision in private and communicate that back to the company.
Yeah, I think we would have to have a public forum if it's all of us. But we can postpone the decision until next meeting when the superintendent is presenting.
That's just my thought, but what's there else?
What are thoughts around that? I saw some head nods.
I personally like the board evaluation, the superintendent evaluation tools, goal setting, and tie it, not tie it, but at least walk with our LCAP. So that's where I'm at. I mean, I'm willing to see what the rest of you want to do, if you want to delay it, it's fine with me. But I'm just saying, what I'm hearing is what I like.
If you're asking my opinion, that's something, I would agree with Mary. I'm ready to go forward.
Trustee, are we?
No, I don't mind. I don't mind speaking. We, when we originally talked about this in our study session, we talked about student outcomes-focused governance model, which has everything to do with LCAP, which has everything to do with metrics, but is more robust. And so my suggestion would be what Trustee Hack said, which is to wait. But also, I think we need to have another conversation as a board about what we really want, because what the RFP said and what we talked about were different.
Yeah, I think it's, like I said, I think this is work that needs to be done, but I think we need to make sure that we're hyper-focused on the things that we said we're going to do. I think we need to be making sure we're spending our money accomplishing the goals that we set out. I think we need training that takes into account racial justice into the core of everything that we do, especially for a community like ours, going through the challenges that our community is going through. And so I think our best next step is to, I think we need to resubmit an RFP that better communicates these needs and these specific goals that we're hoping to accomplish as a board with some of this training.
So what I'm, okay, so what I'm comfortable with is not making a decision today, postponing that, and we will bring it back for an item for discussion in our next board meeting on the 20, 25th, no, 27th, 27th. Okay.
Thank you. Are we bringing back the discussion of changing the requests?
I think it's both.
Because I'm hearing that the way it was written was not according to what the board members would like. That's what I'm hearing.
We can review that.
And then I'm hearing that what we hear is also something that some of us do like.
Yes.
So.
All right, thank you.
So this is not an elimination of any time?
It's not an elimination.
It's a postponement or a decision.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so that was, that was number 12B, right?
12B.
All right, so 13 resolutions for first reading, there are none. 14 resolution for immediate action, resolution number 23-24-28, GAN appropriation limit for 23-24.
This is an annual resolution that goes along with the unaudited actuals that needs to be approved?
Okay. I will, this one related to 28. Okay. Any discussion? I will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Okay, have a motion on the floor for approval?
I second.
Motion on the floor, properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 14B, resolution 23, 2023-24-27, authorizing instructors to teach outside of credential authorization for the 23-24 school year.
Yes, this is additional, again, resolution indicating that several of these teachers have single-subject credentials. However, they'll be teaching either in home hospital or the Avid program, so we need this approval to move forward with keeping them in these classrooms to provide service to students.
And just for public consumption, they are teaching in areas that closely align with their subject areas. Okay, all right. So any discussion?
I move approval.
Okay, have a motion on the floor for approval?
I'll second.
Properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right, so item 15, resolutions for second reading and action, there are none. Item 16, board policies for first reading, there are six. So first is A, revised board policy 0430, comprehensive local plan for special education.
If it's okay, we could just take them in group, they're all there to reflect changes in law, and so they're just there as a first read this evening.
Okay. Are there any discussion?
Are there action?
Uh, no.
No actions, they're for first read, they won't come back for action until next time.
Trustee Dr. Lathan?
Yes, thank you. 16A, which is revised board policy 0430, comprehensive local plan for special education. Usually on our board agendas, it will say when we have a board policy that's coming for revision, these changes reflect the recommendations of the California School Board Association, and this is the only one that does not. Can you tell me more, it was, tell me more about that?
Let me look.
Tell us more about that.
Let me double-check it.
Basically, what I'm asking is, has CSBA recommended these changes? And if not, why are we making the changes?
They have.
Okay, so we just didn't have it on the agenda?
Perhaps it wasn't listed appropriately.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to highlight, item 16E is the policy that Trustee Rocha and I worked on with the revisions we talked about last time, so that's it in combined form as we all wanted to see, so we'll vote on that next time.
All right, thank you. So any other comments or discussion on these items? Hearing none. Item 17, board policy for second reading and action, there are none. Item 18- Item 18, items for general information, there are none. 19, future agenda items from board members, trustee Hack?
Uh, no.
Okay, trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, I have a few. The first, I'm not sure if this needs to be an agenda item, but, or maybe it does in terms of buying one of those tables for the NAACP fundraiser. I'm happy to reduce my professional development budget if that's what we need to do that, but I'd love for us to do that as a school district. I'd like for us to talk about implementing exit interviews into our process. I think we need a discussion on bond community engagement. And then I think we need to revisit the changes that are happening with transportation and get a presentation on those kinds of changes and make sure we're following up with, with those kinds of things. Yeah, and that's all I have.
Okay. Trustee Dr. Lathan?
The only thing I would add is the special education review or audit, and I believe that was in one of our Friday updates. I just wanted to make it public, I've asked for information about special education and some kind of audit, and so at some point it is coming.
Okay, trustee Rocha?
Not right now. I'll pass.
Okay. And I think, so if I could request an update on where we are for the ROTC program? You know, I know that there were.
That's me.
Yeah, that's okay. I know that there was some delay, but if we could have a, an update, maybe that can come in a Friday board. 19, okay, so item 20, we have a, a comment, I guess, for items not on the agenda? Patricia Granados?
How long is it? Is it a minute?
Three minutes.
Three minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, everyone, hi, thank you for being here. I am Patricia Granados, a mother, community person here in the city of Antioch, I've been here since the nineties, I've experienced the school district since I arrived from the city of Santa Clara. Gentrification got us out because the rent got was, got too high, we had to move to Antioch. But I believe that in order for our community to thrive truly, fire, fire every single Back the Blue clan member. Raise your hands if you back the blue, it's okay if you do. But there are injustices that happen in our city, and those Back the Blue members that are in the school district, in the city, in the police department, in the community have terrorized people, and it's not okay. The Back the Blue clan, your friends Mary and Gary orchestrated attacks on anyone doing the right thing. And these attacks are recalls, these attacks are threats, these attacks are intimidation tactics that happen, and one of those victims, and there's a group of us that are organizing to hold your friends accountable. How is Stephanie Anello still the superintendent? How? I, I don't understand. It's no coincidence that under her leadership and under her husband's leadership, former police chief Alan Cantando, a lot of these disgusting things happened in our community. So how, another question I have is how are our tax-paying dollars going to support your friend Kenneth Turnage and another contract maintaining our school districts? It's because he's your friend, right? That's not okay. His father was on the Sarah's List for a pedophile something. That same company should not even be in the school district. You do know that the business was handed down, well, if you didn't know, now you know, I'm sure you do, because he's your friend. But even then, it's not okay. Your friend Nicole Sedano-Silva White has terrorized many people in our communities. Her access to information, of personal information, she used it to orchestrate y'all's recall, intimidation, et cetera. And her association to the police department, the Back the Blue, the school district, and the city have resulted in strategic domestic terrorism, in my opinion. So how strategic were you, Mary Rocha and Gary Hack, in hiring and contracting your other friend Mike Burkholder? Really, to use LCAP funds? You speak of using ethical funds and, and equity, but yet you all had hired him? You voted yes to hire him, and what did he do? He orchestrated his propaganda of misinformation into the community to build hate and spread misinformation against elected officials and community members like myself. So if you have friends in the school district, you, you do have, there's folks in the school district playing hood ABCs, hood ABCs, and they list disgusting things that are rooted in racism. We cannot and will not be here and support any supremacists or racists, and I think they all need to get identified and fired. And for the first time ever in Antioch, we have an after-school program by, I believe it's E, B, C, R, but I believe that that was intentional, because I asked, has there ever been funding for after-school programs? And the answer was no. How, how disgusting, knowing that you had children coming in here from other cities that needed the assistance. Are my three minutes up?
Yeah. Thank you for your comments, we do appreciate them.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, next up is number 21, reports, comments from board members. Uh, we'll start on this side. Mary Rocha?
Oh, I just want to invite you through Friday. It's the beginning of our multicultural month. It starts the 16th and goes to October. And so during that time, there might be a lot of activities going on through the different schools pertaining to the, the families, they come from different countries, and especially Latin American countries. So on Friday, Marsh is having a pan dulce, chocolate coffee, and the parents will be dressed in their ethnic clothing, coming from their region, and meeting the children. And there will be a folklorico dance group, so early, early.
What time?
I'm sorry to say, 7:45, 8 o'clock. Okay, so that's the one event. The next event that I'd like to report, so you could put it on your agenda, would be 9:28, which is be Fremont Elementary, and they're having a multicultural event for parents and, and students. And that's in the evening, probably around 6 o'clock. And again, there, they'll have pan dulce and chocolate and, and coffee and stuff. So those are the two that I have of knowledge right now. And that is why I'm dressed in my outfit, is because I'm welcoming the new culture month.
Thank you. Trustee Dr. Lathan?
Yes, our equity audits are starting in October with about six schools. And I will be working with Ms. Ibarra and her team on talking to parents about equity audits, my experience as a principal, getting equity audits, but then also I've been an auditor as well before. And so just talking to families about what to expect, the outcomes that could possibly be, and, and just really wanting to connect with people. So that will happen at, for example, the African-American Advisory Committee, DLEC, and maybe some other parent advisory committee. So those dates are on the calendar or will be on the calendar, and then I will share as they come up. But I think the first one is September like 21st or something? Yeah, so DLEC and African-American Advisory Committee, yeah. So parents are invited to come. Where?
They're virtual.
They're virtual.
The one at Antioch Middle School though would be DLEC, and that's personal.
So I'll share more information as I learn.
No, they're personal.
Okay. Trustee Hernandez?
Uh, yeah, just to share some of the work we've been doing. Vice President Lathan was too modest to share, but we were at a, a national conference put on by an organization called Local Progress this past weekend, continuing to learn and develop how to be better board members and work with both city council and school board people across the country. There was a lot of really great representation there. There was, we got to meet with the, the head of the LA Teachers Union, the Chicago Teachers Union, and elected officials all across the country, so we can continue to do the work for our students. And then I also wanted to wish everyone a happy National Hispanic Heritage Month. I was at the city council meeting yesterday at night to receive the proclamation that the city did about it, and I shared a little bit about my family who has Hispanic heritage and about the families that exist here in Antioch, and about the families that we have here in our school district, of which nearly half of, of our students are Hispanic or Latino. And then I just wanted to also thank the community for coming out today. We had a lot of community sharing their thoughts and sharing their opinions, and that is such important work, because it helps drive the things that we're able to do. We do our best to hear from the community, but when we're told directly what the needs are, we can best work on what those needs are. So I definitely really strongly appreciate that and hope that the community will keep coming out and hope that we're showing that we are listening and that we are trying to work and we are trying to be better, so that you all feel like you're being listened to and feel like it is worth spending your time coming out, because I know it takes a lot of time to be here at these meetings. I know that's 10:30 PM right now. And so I appreciate all the time that you all spend trying to make this community a better place. And then lastly, something I do at every board meeting is I always share a book that I will be donating to the libraries that we have here, but today, and I think it's so fitting that we had such a strong community coming out, because I want to share a book that's very special to me. It's called I Like Me, and I got this book when I was in kindergarten here in this school district. And this book is really cool, because it's a, a series of different situations where the main character is the student that received the book. So the main character in this book is Antonio, and it talks about my two best friends at the time when I was in kindergarten, Ricky and Zachary. So anytime other characters are mentioned there, it's always Ricky and Zachary. And so I've had this book for, man, like over two decades now, and I think it's important to highlight things like this, that, and the impact that we can make on students and how long they, they last. You know, I have this book and I think about how much this has impacted me to read more. So, you know, I share this because when we do the work up here, you know, I think it's important to, for me to say that, like, you know, I grew up here in this community and, and this is a place that I've been at nearly my entire life, and so the work and the things that we do up here are very meaningful to me. And the reason why I ask so many questions and I want to dive and push us forward, it's because I believe we can do better, because this is an important community for me, and I've seen us do really great things. And this is just a small piece of the really great things that we do here in the school district.
Trustee Hack?
Um, it's 10:30, which means we've had a long meeting.
Yes.
But we accomplished a lot of things this evening, which is really good, because I think the end results are going to be very positive. The other one is, it's very nice to see these two young ladies. We haven't had students in these board meetings for three years, four years, I don't know. So it's very nice that they are here, and I assume we'll have some more buddies in the next session. So I'm, I'm excited about that, that was nice. That's it.
Okay. So I do want to acknowledge the last board meeting, was Kelly Cavallaro's last board meeting? You know, she served in a capacity that is vitally important.
I had lunch with Kelly today, and she said, hello, board. Forgot to say that.
We do want to welcome Maya, but we also want to make sure that we acknowledge the, the hard work and dedication that Kelly did while she was here in this role. So we didn't have a chance to do that because of, yeah, a lot of stuff. Also, I'm going to encourage folks to go out and get mental health services, because as somebody who, you know, without going into details, last board meeting had sort of an emotional response, talking to people in the community, I'm in, I'm going to go see grief therapy, and I encourage us all to do the same. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, can we close in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month?
Absolutely.
Great.
This month and next, next month.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion to adjourn the meeting in honor of National Hispanic Heritage Month, which takes place from September 15th to October 15th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, so we have a, we're closing in honor of National Hispanic Heritage Month, and we have a proper second. So with that, we will, I'll, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All of, any opposed? Motion carries. See you next on October, I'm sorry, September 27th.
Yes, yes.
Kelly says.